Sorry for getting the meeting started about 12 minutes late. Before we get going, I just want to read this announcement that in accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody here for public comment? We have our wonderful partners from RMLD here this evening to kick things off, so we'd like to turn it over to you if you wouldn't mind, and you could sit right there.
Wherever you're most comfortable.
You want to look up there?
Do you want me to call this side?
Yeah. Okay. And if you just wouldn't mind stating your name and information for the folks listening at home.
Colleen O'Brien, the general manager, and with me is the director of engineering and operations, Ame Jafari, is here as well in case anyone has any questions. I know you have a very full agenda, so I'll try to go as quickly as possible and try to give you an update over the last year. Basically, we use the template that's used for the town meeting in Redding, and we provide each of the towns pretty much the same information tailored for them twice a year. So this is your update for the first quarter. One of the things we did differently this year, aside from our third grade educational program which talks to the children throughout all of our service territory on energy conservation, shredding the peak, as well as safety, is we had a summer program where we had the high school come in. I'm not sure if you remember the last few years, some drawings that my children had done to when we changed to paperless, and we kind of changed our annual report to something that was homegrown and done in-house to save money and to be able to put our own, you know, talent to it. The first one was about shaving the peak, the second one showed a picture, skateboarding, shred the peak. So I said, why not have a high school? Why not have them come in, and we'll make the first place winner the cover of our annual report. So this year, it was Electricist Tree was the name of it, and it was Laura Buscemi from North Redding High School. She was the one that won. So it was pretty amazing at the Redding Town Meeting because the picture was the size of the auditorium, so it was very cool. She was there with her family. The second place was Redding Megan Coram. This demonstrated shredding the peak between two and seven, and this one dawned the back of our T-shirts for our annual Public Power Open House, which is in October with the kids with the bucket truck rides and all of the different things that everyone can learn all ages. Third place was Sophia Bonasquosi from Wilmington High School, and it just thought it did a very well job of depicting how friendly we are and courteous and how quick we get to your house. So she did a great job with the artwork. The fourth place was Patrick Acella from Redding, and this one was really cute. He says, what would you like today, Mr. Peak? And he says, well, a little off the top, please, and we shaved the peak. So we had fun, and they got 10 hours of community service for coming in, and I think we'll continue the program. So on to our statistics. I usually show you this slide every year. It just goes through, you know, the peak demand and retail sales for people that are, you know, wondering how many new services and things of that nature. But Mike will have the slide presentation, and, you know, you can go back to those if you have any questions, but it's just our basic statistics. So some of the highlights that I thought worth going over, clean audit with no management letter. Anyone that goes through those know that a nice clean one with no management letter is the best. 2.5 megawatt natural gas power distribution.
Sorry.
That's okay.
The screen's pointing in the wrong direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Distributed generator that was installed at the North Redding to shred the peak that got installed and went live in July. We've been running it, well, during that cold snap, a week or so ago, we ran it every single day. So that is helping to offset the costs of peak-priced electricity, which not only is it very costly, but it also is the time when the more polluting generators are asked to turn on. So there's a lot of benefits to being able to run that. Our solar choice community solar program, we now have one full subscription in Wilmington, 500 customers. The second project, we're looking at 660 customers, and I think as of Friday, we had 560, so we have a few more spaces. They fill up pretty quick. That's 40 Fident Fordham Road in Wilmington, and then there's another four megawatt coming on in Wilmington as well, and we're looking at carving off one of those megawatts for our community solar. We're working with those vendors and coming up with the financials on that program. If you are interested, as I've said in the past, of any type of rooftop unit or whatever, we'd be glad to collaborate with the town and take a look at that. One of the reasons why we look at generating power within our service territory is capacity is such an expensive component of the bill, and if the capacity is actually being generated in the service territory, you don't have to pay that. So again, another benefit. We did do our triannual cost of service study this year, Shred the Peak Campaign. I spoke about the high school art contest. We've done our rebates. Every year, we do an analysis and change up our rebates, and we now have a new online rebate portal, so you can do online to fill out your rebate forms, and it's all, so you don't have to deal with paper. Efficiency and peak reduction measures, this is just a kind of a list of the things that we offer that people like to see, commercial energy initiatives, lighting rebates, electrical vehicle charging rebate program we have now, if you want to try to get one for your home. We're actually installing one in each town through the Volkswagen grant. We're going to start one at BRMLD this spring. We held a lunch and learn for commercial, industrial, and municipal customers for the peak reduction program, which we already talked about the benefits there. Residential energy assessments, please don't hesitate to call us. We have a great program to go out and evaluate your home. Talked about the rebate portal. See, that, that, that. Okay. Solar choice, again, this just goes over it. We're probably going to be changing it up a little bit because we did so well on the first couple of projects. So Jane and the Integrated Resources Department right now are going through the rate analysis to see if we can't even lower the cost further from the monthly charge of $5. Economic development, a lot of the towns are always looking for, how can I attract more to my area? This is a slide that basically we used, we used it in Wilmington to attract Osrim Silvania to come in. They had five other choices of where to move, so it works really well if economic development, I mean, if you want to help feed the golden egg of RMLD and keep the rates low, or, you know, or if you, you know, are looking to increase your development. Proactive maintenance programs, we went over them last year, they're going very well. We're almost on a cyclic basis for each one of them. We haven't heard any complaints about tree trimming or anything like that. We're starting to see the real benefit for implementing all of these. If there's any questions, I'll just skip over those. We've gone over those in detail. Oh, those give you the numbers of what we got done this past year, so like manhole inspections, 961 out of 1,237, so you can see how quickly we're going through. The LED streetlight program was a three-year conversion from a grant that we received. We are now 78 percent, so you can see in North Redding, we have 367 lights to go, and those do include the ones that were shut off that we are now turning on. The next slide talks about the credits that come out of switching to an LED light program. See all the numbers. Kind of good slide, a little bit to take in. Mike?
Could you just point out the savings to North Redding based on the conversion?
I mean, this, the 7,000, yeah. There would have, I mean, I think we talked about this a little bit too, and it just bothers me to keep bringing it up, but there would have been a little bit more savings, I mean, there's good and bad to it. There was a capital cost component that was not being collected as part of the rate before I got there. So when we did the analysis, that piece was missing. The good point of that is that you were getting a discount all along. The bad point was that it didn't drop as much as it could have if that capital had been in there. But now the capital is built in there, so this is the overall savings, and it includes all the ones that were shut off. So it's still, it's still a benefit, you know, maintenance, and it will be reflected in the overall rate as well. Maintenance should go down, we should be able to have to, you know, replace them for 10, 15, maybe even 20 years. So it's a great program, and we were very fortunate to win that grant. Double poles, everyone's favorite. So this is saying that North Redding, so in Comcast, we have five ready to transfer, fire department 37, Redding Light 33, combined with 13 transfers and 20 poles, and Verizon 23. And Engines is a program that everyone who's attached to the pole shares. If they're not on it, we're trying to find out who's not on it, get them on it, and basically when it's time, when the new pole gets put in, we start transferring, and when everyone's done transferring, the pole butt gets taken out. The person that puts the pole in and takes the pole butt out is the custodial of your area. The custodian in your area is Redding Light. The custodian in Wilmington is Verizon. We have the whole service territory split in half. So even though the ownership of each pole is 50/50 ownership on the pole, the custodial area is split. And so that's why you have pole poles in, under Redding Light. Well, I met with Mike earlier, and we discussed the North Redding Fire Department and the 37, so I went back, and what we did is we ran the list of all the streets, and my dog kind of ate it a little bit, so it's.
We've heard that excuse before. The dog eats your homework.
So I'm going to leave this with you. But what I did is I, I know, it's just dog food. That's all. So what I did when I got back, we didn't have time to verify all 37, so I gave a sampling handful to the assistant general foreman and a sample to the night man, and I sent them out for an hour, and every single one of them that was checked is accurate on that list. So I think based on that sampling, I think we're at 37. So I can work with you, we can help out. I know you have a new fire chief coming in, and we just make sure they get on Engines and we can move forward.
Colleen, where are we in the pecking order as far as coming off the pole? I mean, there's a certain order that who's ever on there has to come off?
Typically, electric is always at the top, and then it's, and then after that is a variety of telecommunications. Fire is usually the bottom. So you'll have Verizon and then Comcast, but they may have multiple fiber, you know, Verizon still has some of their old copper, which I wish they would take away. We're working with them on that.
Not so fast, because that's going to cost us a lot of money.
Why?
Because our fire department communications are tied to those.
They're tied to?
Copper.
Oh, to the copper that they're using? Oh, so they're still using it?
We're transitioning out of it, but right now, we still rely on it for radiation.
Okay.
No real hurry.
Mr. Misery.
That's good to know, because, that's good to know. I didn't know that.
You can give Michael a call. So you may.
So I have a question related to the management of the poles and connectivity. There's a potential that North Redding will have to put in its own INET, connecting all the town buildings and schools.
Right.
I assume we have to go through Redding to get that set up? Not to do it, but to get permission in there? How does that work?
Yeah, you have to fill out an attachment agreement. We have other towns that have wires that are connected to the poles. We just have to have an attachment agreement, and this is one of the reasons why, because they would have to go into Engines so that they realize that it's their turn to, you know, move their wire. You know, and as long as there's room on the pole and there's no make-ready work, then we really don't have a problem with towns attaching. But we do have some, you know, wires that have been abandoned in place, and that becomes kind of a problem. So I think, you know, with the attachment agreement, you know, it's just making sure that when you're done with it, that we have an agreement that it gets removed. You know? Does that answer the question?
Yes.
But yeah, so, and don't forget, we have a loop too, so depending on where you're trying to get to, I'm more than happy to help out. So those are the double poles, and that's a snapshot of January 16. So since the last time I was here, it's gone down significantly, but then we may have added 10 new poles. I didn't bring the last one, I meant to, because I knew the last time it was a little higher, so. I don't know what it was, it's like 90.
99.
90 something.
Took over like 10 weeks.
Yeah. We really got on it after you gave it to me the last time.
We were kind to you.
Oh, you were kind, but I got on it. We didn't really have a problem at the last storm, so this is the one in October, which hit North Redding pretty hard. So this is kind of our, so the way it works at Redding is we have a control room, which is being rebuilt into a smart grid center, which will have, you know, GIS outage management, and it will look like, you know, a dispatch center that it's supposed to look like, where an IVR system is operating similar. If you know people from IOUs, they'll get a text on their phone, or you can look at a map and you can see where the outage is at, and it'll give you the estimated time of restorations instead of us trying to answer a thousand calls and having the guys tweet out when they're also trying to switch on the system. It makes it very difficult and can be dangerous. So we're trying to, you know, limit the amount of calls, and then this year, we started a liaison phone, which I had given Mike and the fire police chief. It's an unpublished number, so that the selectmen or whoever can call and get a particular update. If the police and fire are reporting an outage, there's one number, but if they're calling to say, hey, how's it going? Should we need to be setting up some shelters, those type of discussions, then we're there available with this liaison person, and I'm usually sitting right there, and we can, and we can help out. But that way, we're not in the control room, because this whole smart grid and having these switches that are smart and they're looking to find where the fault is and they're bringing power back around to, you know, to isolate the problem, get as many people back in power, you know, there's a lot of focusing on that that we need our control room to do, which is why we're, you know, investing in this smart grid type of system. So I think by next, by next winter, we'll have some portals and customer information portals that are installed, so I think you'll see a big difference.
Mr. Misery.
It seems to me over the past couple of years, you've put a lot more effort into maintenance of the trees and the area of the poles and everything, which seems to have been positive. Do you have any data that supports?
You know, I didn't put it, I don't, I didn't put it in this slideshow. We do that every month for the, for the board, and yes, the pie chart does show that animal contacts are getting a little bit better because we're putting animal guards up. The tree trimming is really starting to pay off. In this particular storm, though, it wasn't necessarily the trimming and the branches and the leaders that were falling. It was the whole entire tree was lifting up out of the earth, and, and some people, you know, unless you see it happening, people don't realize that, you know, we have to have a crane, we have to get a crane in there before Redding Light can even go in. So typically, the police are there and wires that are down, we'll go in and secure them, you know, on foot, and then the cranes will come in, you know, chop up the tree, move the tree, and then Redding Light can get in there. And it's a pretty long process. It's probably worth going to see one sometime because, you know, they, some folks just don't understand why we're not there immediately, and, and we also try to be fair to each town. We prioritize, and we try to send the same amount of crews to each town, and depending on how dangerous it is. But most of the towns did have one lodge tree or two lodge trees that we were working on, but we only have one crane with Mayor, so he was making his runs. And we do try to do it fairly, and, and again, as long as there's not arcing wires or, you know, life-threatening situations, you know? Yes?
My comments weren't critical of what happened in October.
Yeah.
My comments were that it seems like the extended effort of pre-main is, is reduced the number of incidents.
Yeah, I think it has too. The next time I come, I'll bring the slides on, on the outage causes, and we can go over that. We have industry standards, KPI, SADI, and it tells you exactly what's causing what, and it's kind of an interesting thing, but you're absolutely right. It is helping. It just doesn't help when the whole tree falls over.
Colleen?
Yeah.
I could just bring you back for a minute about this change that you're going to make in this center.
Yeah.
When you push out information, I know you're using Twitter.
Right.
But you have your app, but the app doesn't push out information. It doesn't send information to people that have the app, at least the way it seems to be today, unless I haven't done an update or something. But that would be helpful, because we did get the word out, and a lot of people did download the app.
Right.
But I think your app could be a lot more useful if we could get it to push information to people in North Redding that are on the app.
Right. You mean to, so?
So when you have a power outage, you know, it should notify outages in these areas and then update, and just pushes the information.
Right. Let me, let me ask Mark why that doesn't work. It has, like, another issue with Twitter on the app is it doesn't timestamp it, and I don't know exactly why. We've been trying to work with, you know, with the app company and with Twitter of why we couldn't get that to work.
See, I don't use Twitter. I know a lot of people don't use Twitter, but having an app on your phone, and once you're in, you're logged in, it should just be able to send you the information. And you want to report, it's very good if I want to report an outage.
Yeah.
It takes 10 seconds, and I can do it.
Right.
And I can see that it goes through, but.
Right.
There's nothing coming the other way.
Yeah. Let me, let me ask Mark from IT why it won't push, but, you know, you're building an app, and then you're using other apps on top of the apps, and sometimes it just, you know, that you won't be able to get a push notification because you're, again, we're building a Frankenstein in the interim of building this smart control room with the customer information portal and the IVR. That's where we want to go.
Well, it's the only reason why I mention it, is you go through this and you build out, and try to incorporate some of that technology. I think it makes the instinct, even for our police officers, if they have that app on there, most of them have smartphones, if they have the app, and they're getting the information pushed to them as well, communication will be pretty quick.
I'm sorry. Yeah. The new outage management system has that capability, like Colleen mentioned, and one of the modules is customer portal, and the customer portal, what it does, it gives you, if you sign in and actually register, it goes right to your cellphone and tells you.
When is it coming out?
That's coming out, we should have the customer portal by April, May of this year.
That's great.
And then by next year, we're going to have IVR also added to that.
Excellent.
Which means it's going to send you a message that, you know, we know you're out before you even call us, we let you know that you're out.
So when you have that implemented, it'd be really helpful if we could get you to come back, and we present it here.
Yeah. It gives some training. Okay, that's perfect. I will ask Mark in the interim, though.
Yeah, all that same, getting news out to the consumer.
Yeah.
The biggest way people communicate in this town is in North Redding Community Connection on Facebook, it's our social media. Can you guys put updates on there?
Well, because we were going to an IVR, we weren't going to, we weren't going to go from Twitter and then add Facebook, because, I don't know, a lot of people expect that we can reply to their comments, and we were just using it as an interim measure to try to get information that had never been sent out before. You know what I mean?
We can.
You know, we, I, I can ask too if there's a way to use Hootsuite to, to push Twitter out onto a Facebook without us having a Facebook, so I can ask that.
That's just the biggest, quickest reach to get people.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Now, IVR has the capability to text, to send you a voicemail, as well as email, but depending on which system, the various process you're going to get, they have capability of pushing into the, all the applications as well as, you know, the Facebook, I believe, but we have to look into that, you know, depending on whether we can get it to the.
Please let us know after you. Thank you. Please continue.
Sure. So just wrapping it up, the strategic vision, we're, we're doing a strategic roadmap in each of the divisions, so, like, power supply, out 20 years, IT, out 20 years, and I know you say to yourself, well, how can you go out IT 20 years? Well, you're looking at the technology in the first of the five years, but they're also supporting other divisions, like the new substation that we're building in Wilmington, where IT supports them, and then you're also incorporating succession for people that are retiring or whatever. So these strategic visions, now that all of the career developments are done, all the job descriptions have been rewritten, that's our next goal, is coming up with the roadmap, so that when I retire, I can say, it's all fixed, and here you go, it's all right there, and I'll be good to go. So, let's see, can you, I think that's it, I think I went over those. And then that is the governor, and me, and me, and Jane, and Commissioner Judson of the DPU, and Tom Oliva, who's in our group, and we just won a million dollars, I'm sure you saw it in the newspaper, for the largest battery storage facility in the state, and it's so big that it's even bigger than cumulatively all battery storage in the state of Massachusetts. So it's a 5-megawatt, and we are putting it in North Redding, so it's going right next to our distributed generator. We did not accept the, we did not apply for the grant by asking for the money to build it, because the technology changes so quickly, so we're taking the million-dollar grant, and it pays down the power supply costs, so it comes right off your bill. So that's the way we're, we're taking the grant money. And so it's very exciting. Tom Oliva is the project manager on it, and we're going to be partnering with Next Terra Energy Group, and we should have it built by this coming peak, so it should be done by June, and it's super exciting. So there was 69 applications, and they only had 10 million, but they ended up bumping it up to 20 million dollars. So the only other one that got a large storage was Taunton, and they're going to build their own, but it wasn't 5 megawatts, it was less than that, I can't remember, but it was three or four. So we're very excited about that project coming, adding to our renewables, reducing our carbon footprint, and then we're excited to be doing it in North Redding. I think that's the last one. That's the best picture. That's just a picture of our first three. Remember I said, you know, we had the three covers that when we went, because when I came here, I was like, how much have we spent on making this? How many copies are we making? So we went paperless the first year, so that was the first year, the second year, the third year, and we got to see the new high school one. So don't forget to shred the peak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Any questions, or calling in our team?
Just, just a couple of comments. One was, the chairman and I were able to go down to the ribbon cutting for your natural gas generated. Quite a piece of equipment, and very quiet.
Very quiet.
Very quiet, which was tremendous to, not here. And again, and I was one of those neighborhoods affected back in October with my neighbors, and we were out 27 hours, but communication on the ground was very good, because most of our neighbors were pretty informed, because, you know, the Redding Light employees were very welcoming, and as we were trying to get up Oakdale Road, which wasn't easy. were trying to get up Oakdale Road, which wasn't easy, uh, along with the local police department, fire department, we were able to get the information anyway.
Yeah.
So, uh, it was a huge undertaking. I mean, it looked like a disaster area. And it, uh, it's surprising how well, uh-
Yeah, I think it came out well.
People weren't happy about being out twenty-four hours, but that's okay.
Yeah.
You know, it really did go well. And, uh, credit to your, uh, people that are working there on the ground, they, they do a great job.
Yeah, and it's running well. I mean, we're, we, we try to hit twelve, uh, transmission peaks every month, you know, so you run it a few times, try to catch that peak, and then one annual peak, it's through the summer, we try to catch that and, um, you know, the more we can hit them, the more money we can save. So it goes back to everybody.
Yeah, very impressive though.
It was wise, it was very impressive. Nice design. Well, thank you for coming in this evening, we do appreciate it. And we hope we'll have you back here in July when you have your new technology implemented.
Okay, great. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. On the agenda, it brings us to a show cause hearing for A One Auto Sales. And I'm going to turn over the Chairman position to Mrs. Minupelli because I'm going to recuse myself only because one of the employees is a neighbor of my brother-in-law. And I just wanna, just to be safe and sorry, I don't wanna show any conflict of interest. So I'll be recusing myself, turning the chair over to Mrs. Minupelli.
And, uh, Madam Chair, I'd like the record to show that I too will be recusing myself. I will not be participating in any of the discussion, I will not be taking any, any vote and offering any opinion on the matter as I have a family member who, who holds a Class II license here in town, so I will not be participating nor voting. Thank you.
So, let's begin. This hearing involves the Class II dealer's license of A One Auto Sales at one forty-four Main Street, North Reading. Licensee Joseph Mongello. And I see that you've stepped forward. Could you identify yourself, my name and address?
Members of the council, my name is Rich DiGeralmo. I'm an attorney for one forty-two and one forty-four Main Street L L C. Uh, they are the landlord of the property. Uh, I, along with Mr. Peter Piantadossi, am also, I'm also here not only as the attorney for the owner, uh, but as a co-owner along with Mr. Piantadossi. It's my belief that the licensee will not be attending the hearing this evening.
Are you Attorney, um, DiGeralmo, are you here to represent the licensee?
I am not. I represent-
Okay. Well, I'd ask if the licensee is present, if the licensee could come forward or the licensee's representative come forward. So we'll make a note for the record, the licensee is not here. It is eight forty-five. We do have our, uh, we, this is a, this is a violation hearing, so we're gonna proceed. How, how we're gonna proceed is hearing from our enforcement officials, hearing the information that they have to present. Hopefully, the licensee will appear so we can hear from the licensee. But we're here to discuss the alleged violations and the information that our enforcement officials have, have to present. If you have factual information pertaining to these alleged violations, we'd be happy to hear from you. But how we'll proceed is hearing from our enforcement officials first and then hopefully hearing from the licensee. If the licensee does appear, he was noticed to appear. So if there's anything factually after you've heard that you want to present that pertains to the alleged violations, we'd be happy to hear from you.
Yes, I'd only ask if you'd give us an opportunity at that time to present, um, our position on this.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have Chief Murphy and Detective Lieutenant Romeo. And why don't we just begin with you, you giving us a brief summary? We did see that, that the, the January tenth notice of hearing to the licensee requested his presence and that of his representative. We did see the immense amount of documentation that was prepared by you Chief and by you Lieutenant, but we'd like to, you just give us a summary with regard to what you determined in your investigation.
Okay, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Um, so I will give a summary and please stop me anytime if you have any questions. I will keep it brief, um, because a lot of the complaints are repetitive. Um, but I think it's important that we, we at least get some little facts out from the complaints that brought it forward to us. Excuse me. So during the month of December of two thousand seventeen, we received a complaint from a consumer alleging deceptive practices at one forty-four Main Street. A complaint identified that business as A One Auto Sales. Uh, we began an investigation, we sent an undercover police, um, team in to the location to determine whether or not the complaint was valid. The officers reported that they too experienced the same deceptive practices, um, regarding mileage on a vehicle. At that point, I ordered an administrative inspection to occur at that, um, location. As you, uh, revealed earlier, I did give a packet, um, several documents, um, detailing the investigation, but also supporting documents from Massachusetts Attorney General's Office of Complaints that were filed against the same business owner, A One Auto Sales, as well as a civil complaint of Movement District Court. Uh, the complaints described similar deceptive behavior, which appeared to be an ongoing, um, pattern of business practices. The complaints go all the way back to March of, of two thousand seventeen. Uh, the reports and additional supporting document that I did submit reveal violations of A One's auto license, um, conditions, deceptive practices, misrepresentations of vehicles' conditions, misrepresentation of accurate mileage, violations of Class II licensing statutes, as well as Lemon Law violations. Um, just to briefly go over, the, the first complaint that did come to us was regarding, um, deception on the true mileage of a motor vehicle. Um, I did have our officers go in and confirm that one particular vehicle was advertised at having only fifty-one thousand miles on it. Um, the, the vehicle had, um, documentation through the title as well as, um, when the, um, the owner of A One Auto Sales bought the vehicle at auction, that the vehicle did have an odometer, um, mileage discrepancy. Um, so we sent the officers in to try, to try to determine whether or not the complaint was valid. Again, there was an internet search on Carfax, which indicated that the odometer was replaced in two thousand eleven and set to zero. The original mileage at the time was set was sixty thousand miles. Now, the repair was legal and was recorded correctly. However, the, the vehicle was advertised for sale at A One Auto Sales in December of two thousand seventeen at having only fifty-one thousand miles. It was clear that the vehicle had over a hundred and eleven thousand miles at that time. Very similar to the complaint from, the complaint that, um, came to us originally, uh, our undercover offices tried to inquire about the mileage. Um, the salesperson was very evasive about it and essentially stopped all contact and we started questioning the true veracity of the fifty-one thousand miles. Um, noting that as soon as the contact stopped with the complaint, it was re-advertised again for fifty-one thousand miles. When I, when the detectives went in undercover, again, once we started questioning, they stopped all communications. The vehicle was again advertised at only fifty-one thousand miles. So it was clear that they're, they were looking for somebody to take the bait and buy the vehicle, believing it was only fifty-one thousand miles. So it's important that, um, to note that Lieutenant Romeo and one of our detectives did go in, um, who tried to contact the person that we were, um, originally dealing with. Um, but it seems that he only is there by appointment, so they weren't able to talk to him. The, the person that was there asked the officers to go look at the vehicles, which they did. Lieutenant Romeo was there, um, noticed that there was a sticker that was required by law to replace in the vehicle once an odometer is changed. That, that sticker was on the vehicle, um, so even if they didn't know it at the time, which we believe they did when they bought the vehicle, it was clearly, uh, the sticker was on the vehicle, um, that the, that the odometer was replaced. There was no Lemon Law or warranty information as required by Massachusetts law on this vehicle or any other vehicles that were in the back lot of, of the, um, sales, the A One Auto Sales. Uh, the detectives asked about the warranty and if the vehicle passed inspection and the salesman had stated that he has a guy who could get a sticker. Um, just to note on that, many of the complaints that we've, um, reviewed have that saying, essentially, we'll get you a sticker. We take that to mean that it's not gonna be get, gotten at a legitimate business, um, that, and, and, and many of the complaints detail that he's gonna get his guy to get you a sticker. Again, like I said, the Attorney General's Office of Movement District Court had complaints filed there. Both of those complaints, um, relayed the same information about the salesman telling them that we'll be able to get you a sticker. And also, many of the vehicles that are advertised as, um, in quotes, "hundred percent, we'll get you a sticker." The advertisements are usually on Craigslist, um, on Carfax, they're very vague about what type of condition the vehicles are in, but only that, the vehicle will run that it'll be able to get a sticker. While the detectives were there, they asked to see the title for that particular vehicle, which they were showed. Um, it was clear right on the front of the title that there was a mileage discrepancy and, and they typically, and, and situations like that, they just put nine hundred ninety-nine thousand miles right on the, um, right on the title. After the detectives went in, the vehicle was then again reposted with only, uh, advertisers only having fifty-one thousand miles. The detectives then contacted the, um, salesperson again, um, to ask him about the discrepancies with the mileage. He says, I know nothing about it. He said, just look at the engine, it's clean. And then he, he went and said that he didn't do much research on this particular vehicle and he thinks there's around sixty to seventy thousand miles on it. Just to reiterate again, the Attorney General's Office has at least five complaints on file against A One Auto Sales. When we did the investigation in late December through January tenth, the detective continued to check the company's website, all the advertisers that they previously have, um, looked at. They still claimed to have twenty to thirty vehicles onsite for sale. We've confirmed that through photographs, which I believe, um, was included in the package that I sent. Again, we did an administrative search, um, inspection I should say, which is pursuant to Massachusetts law one forty-sixty-six. We did meet with the owner, um, Phil Mongello. Originally, when the detectives went in, they were met by a person by the name of Marco. Um, that person made a phone call and within ten to fifteen minutes, the owner, Joey Mongello, showed up. Um, that person Marco then walked to the back of the building, we never saw him again. Um, Mongello had essentially stated that, um, he only had one employee, that employee's name was Mike Mohammed. Um, come to find out, there's at least three or four employees there, one of which was this person Marco, who went up the back door and essentially fled the building. Um, we determined that that person to be some of the mass and that there's an active warrant for the arrest, which apparently was, went up the back door. So essentially, uh, the owner asked the detective why he was there. The detective explained to him that he was there doing administrative search, he wanted to see all sales records, um, titles for all the vehicles onsite. Um, essentially, we wanted to do a review of records to see if there's any other deceptive practices. Mongello was unable to show us any records other than a screenshot of, um, some sort of online inventory system that he had in place, um, which really wasn't accurate. He didn't even remember the password to it. So, um, the last date on that particular online site was March of two thousand seventeen. So it was a, at least a six to seven month lapse in, in recording types of vehicles that were sold there. At that point, I just wanted to note this, at that point, um, Mongello had made a phone call to somebody and within ten minutes, another person showed up, um, came in, was very loud, essentially said that he'll come in and pay thirteen thousand cash for a vehicle that was, um, outside of the parking lot. But I just wanted to note that the, um, Mongello had asked the male if he could wait, but then the male just said, call cops are dirty, um, and then left. The detective thought it was, what he thought was trying to intimidate him as a law enforcement officer, trying to do his job. I just wanted that noted here so you can see the type of practices that are in play at that type of business. Um, so we did ask, again, all the, we wanted to see all the sales, which we were, were unable to see. Um, so we, to this day, we don't have any records of the sales that ever occurred at that, um, at that site. Um, the, the owner did ask why we were doing the inspection and the detective explained, um, you know, the amount of vehicles they had to sell, the complaints about the deceptive practices. And at that point, Mongello said, I know, you're right, you got me. Um, we asked about the employees again, he says he only has one employee, um, named Mike Mohammed. To this day, we have not identified that particular person. We've identified at least three other employees. Um, we do have business cards for three different employees, so it was clear he was being deceptive and who was actually even working there. We did get a phone call, I'm, I'm sorry, a phone number for the person Marco. We did, um, we did talk to him eventually, but, um, he gave us a false date of birth. Um, we were unable to actually match who he wa, who he said he was with any motor vehicle orders on, um, on file. So again, um, we've seen, we've seen a host of different people that have worked in and we're trying to identify them, um, and we've been essentially, um, given the runaround by the owner as to who actually works there. So that has not, still to this day, has not been determined who the employees actually So just, um, I just wanted to review two other complaints. These were a little bit different, one of them being, um, I should say, they're, they're similar, but they're different because there's what appears to be fraud, forgery involved. Similar complaints in that people were sold vehicles and when they signed the contract, um, one particular case, the, the, the price for the vehicle went up almost three thousand dollars. There's no explanation as to why. Um, the person in the complaint says that they were rushed. Um, essentially, they, by the time they signed the paperwork and got the loan documentation, it was already too late. They've addressed it through the Attorney General's Office and that case is still under investigation. But in one other particular case, um, the, the complaint actually said it was not her signature on the loan documents. So the loan documents that she signed was different from the ones that were actually presented to her at the final, uh, sale, um, which again, it was at least a couple of thousand dollars more than what she agreed to pay for the vehicle. And actually, what the vehicle was actually advertised for, um, so they just added to the price, um, without any explanation. Um, so one, one particular person, the vehicle was purchased for seventy-four hundred dollars, but eventually the total sale price, um, came up to eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. And that seemed to be a common practice, um, with several complaints that we received. The last complaint I just wanna bring up after the, um, after the initial hearing, um, a couple of weeks ago, the North Reading Transport brand ran an article. We did get a complaint from a North Reading resident, um, the, that next Monday, essentially, very similar, um, complaints regarding whether or not the vehicle passed an inspection. The person actually had to tie the gas tank, um, with ropes to the vehicle because it was falling off. Check engine light was on. They went back to see the salesman, the salesman, um, essentially told him that he would get the vehicle to pass inspection. Um, that, that complaint was never shown any warranty information, um, nor Lemon Law Victim did actually ask the Mark about the Massachusetts Lemon Law, and he told him that the Lemon Law was on the vehicle from two thousand fourteen in Newark, so he couldn't use the Lemon Law against a dealership that's not accurate, um, how the law is applied. So, you know, it was certainly more misleading information so they were, you know, they wouldn't have to be responsible for getting the vehicle fixed. Um, the victim did ask that the, uh, that the dealership be to fix the vehicle or give him some money back, um, and, and Marco told that he would lose money if he fixed the truck and refused to fix it. The victim did contact the Attorney General's Office. And just as we started to do records, we received at least three other complaints, um, over the past year, um, which we believe now, looking back on it, is, is most likely because of the deceptive practices. One of them was, um, the disturbance between the, um, a sale, salesperson and a customer because things weren't, um, the way they were supposed to be. Um, at the time, we referred it as a simple matter, we weren't aware that the type of practice was going on there. Uh, we've received two other complaints, which we've referred, um, the complaints to the Attorney General's Office. So as far as the Attorney General's Office and Office of Consumer Affairs, they, they don't connect the complaints, so we're still working with them to determine- the complaints, so we're still working with them to determine actually how many complaints are, have been levied against A-1 Auto Sales, which clearly more than any business we've had in North Reading, I can tell you that. So just in summary, we're, this is pretty much a common practice. I don't know any legitimate businesses that's going on there. We've asked that they provide us records to show that they are conducting that. We just haven't received any.
Do you have anything that you wanted to add to that, Detective?
As you know, the packet's very long, Chief Corwin Daley. Chief summarized briefly what the facts are. There's much more detail in everything that he had mentioned. Goes to the intent. Deceptive, not only deceptive, sales practices, but the section they show us even when we posed as customers and when we identified ourselves as law enforcement, assumed Mass. General Law to do an inspection, we were lied to, misled, branded gambling. It's ever evolving, every day something new comes in on it. You can see the fold of it. We went on the room on that one, we need another one, so.
Do the board members have any questions for our enforcement officials?
I would just like to thank the Department of Public Safety for that. This is enlightening. I went through probably a hundred and twenty pages of just allegations here and it's troubling. I'd like to hear what some of the folks that I've connected have to say about this because I, you know, we need to make sure our consumers and our residents are in trust of local businesses and this is beyond the pale. I'm very upset at what I'm reading. Just wanted to stay down to record, but thank you, gentlemen, and your staff for what you've done.
Just a question. Town Administrator. Michael, we sent out a notice of the public hearing to A-1.
Yes.
Was it done in writing? And was it sent in certified form or something?
So through you, Mr. Chairman, notices, there were three notices actually delivered relative to this hearing. One was the initial hearing notice, which was sent two days after the board voted to schedule the hearing. That was sent via hand delivery, so delivered in person to the location and then also by U.S. mail. And the same was the case for two supplemental notifications, which were also provided to the board for this evening. So there should have been a total of six different intersections between the town of North Reading and the establishment, three of which were in person and three of which were by U.S. mail.
Have they responded back as to why they're not here tonight?
No, I've received no response to my knowledge.
And it's a six-car license, six cars' sales at any point in time?
That's correct. The license is issued for six cars.
And just to, for the, for the record, how many cars did you observe when you went on yard?
The internet, the internet say there are thirty-one cars posted on their website today. I can tell you there was more than that onsite, different locations on the property. And that's just on the website, but there's other, they were advertising on Craigslist, Facebook and other apps, cars to sell that were not incorporated on the website. So the numbers.
So daily, it's between twenty and thirty. So when you look at their, the advertisements, you can clearly see that the photos are taken in North Reading, right in front of the gas station. There's also an area in the back of where the motorhome, I mean, the trailer park is in the back where the homes are. There's a whole fenced-in area there, there's at least another fifteen cars in the back that we were unaware of, but there is a fenced-in area there. And today, later in the day today, there seemed to be a lot of movement to reduce the inventory of the vehicles. What are the other reasons?
Any other questions the board members have for the enforcement officials? So I think at this point Attorney Deidre Alamo and Mr. Piantodosi, if you wanted to come up, if you have any other input on these allegations that you want the board to consider?
Thank you, members of the board.
Excuse me, one, excuse me.
Madam Chair, before they start, could I just ask a few questions so I understand their relationship with the licensee because I'm not sure the connection? Yeah. Gentlemen, what is your relationship with Mr. Mangiello?
He's a tenant of, he's a tenant of ours.
Okay. And do you have any relationship with A-1 Motor Sales?
No.
Okay. And do you, have you, did Mr. Mangiello tell you about these hearing notices?
I do not know Mr. Mangiello. Mr. Piantodosi does know him.
Could Mr. Piantodosi step up too as well?
Sure.
I'm just trying to understand the nexus here. I'm not sure why you guys are here tonight. I want to make sure.
So through the, through the chair, obviously, thank you for allowing us to speak. We were notified middle of last week that there was, there was these hearing notices going on. I immediately demanded from the tenant that I see the file that they had received. Obviously, we take this very seriously. We have spent a significant amount of money in renovating that gas station in that property all the way through from the tenants, electrical systems, all the way up, at which point, just through the board, I was told by Mr. Mangiello that they would not be attending today, which I strongly advised against because we had also explained to them that they were in violation of their lease in regards to some of the terms of their lease and that we would not be, you know, if in the event that this was to pursue, that they would be responsible. And we just came to an amiable agreement to remove cars immediately, get off the premises and try and work forward to, to move in the right direction.
So you guys, both you two gentlemen, have no financial interest with Mr. Mangiello?
None.
Okay, you're just merely landlord tenant?
Landlord tenant.
And what is your position on what you're?
In full disclosure, I've known Mr. Mangiello for a period of years. I never, never thinking that, you know, this would be the circumstance. I thought him to be a good tenant. I think that maybe financial issues have caused this circumstance. You know, so it's, it's, I think it's just kind of evolved out of, spun out of control. And obviously, I'm not, being a automobile, so financially, I own a significant amount of real estate and also an automobile dealership. That's how I started when I was eighteen years old. I've got fifteen years down in Somerville of an unblemished A-plus better business rating and also one of twenty dealerships that is actually respected enough by the registered motor vehicles to actually issue my own license plates at my dealership. There are only twenty used car dealers within the state that have access to, direct to the registry's servers. So obviously, I take this very seriously. Our, our initial circumstance, when this came about, I reviewed the allegations, was not unhappy, was very unhappy about what I had seen in regards to the warranty and just said to them, "Guys, listen, this is, this is it." I mean, I, you know, I'm sure the board wasn't, you know, based on these allegations, you know, the board, you know, I've never been in the front of a board like this, under these circumstances, under my own business, and I, and I don't appreciate being here tonight. So, you know, respectfully, I contacted the town administrator this afternoon notifying that we would be present as, as the landowners. We've done a lot to improve that property to benefit the residents that are long, lifelong North Reading residents out back, many of which wanted to come and speak on my behalf and I just didn't want to keep them up until nine o'clock at night. I just didn't feel that it was necessary. But they're pretty impressed with the monies that we've spent in a trailer park. So that being said, you know, so, so I think ameably, they're bowing out. So just to clarify that, that's the impression that I received and I kind of strongly urged, let's put it that way. So, you know, it is our position as, as the landowners to potentially present an application at later point to move forward with, under my business, my corporation, regroup this. But I think, I think systematically, if you look over time, the quality of automobiles they sold diminished. And as the quality diminished, problems come with that. And I think it was, you know, it ended up becoming lack of cash flow. So, you know, I, I would be glad to, to work with North Reading Police in regards to any and all consumers to the best of my ability, even though it's not my place in regards to resolving consumer complaints to the best of my ability and seeing what I can do on my end.
If I, Madam Chair, why would you be, why would you get involved?
It's my property and at the end of the day, I, I don't want people leaving my piece of property. I, I just, I don't, I wouldn't want that to happen. And, and I don't want to see people less fortunate who bought inexpensive cars. And that's the case, you know, a lot of these cars were twelve hundred, fifteen hundred dollar cars. They, they become, you know, and it's, and it's, you know, what happens with that comes the circumstances you're talking about, you know, you know, mileage discrepancy on things, you know, there's, there's, there becomes issues with that, so.
Well, no, those issues don't become because you haven't owned the car. They become because someone's fraudulent.
So let me, if I could just, let's just, I, I, I think the board certainly appreciates your coming forward. I think what we're here on though is, is something totally different than maybe your future plans with your property, although we certainly appreciate your explaining that. But I think what we, we need to address right now are the allegations that are before us.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
But we do appreciate your at least coming here. At least someone from that property showed up and that, that's, that's important to us. Is there anything else Attorney Deidre Alamo, you might want to say that hasn't already been said? Because we do need to move forward with the hearing.
Just, just that hopefully at the end of the day, I think the primary reason we're here is that we would like to bring an applicant, probably Mr. Piantodosi, back before you in the near future as an applicant for that license. He has an unblemished record as he represented to you and because of the substantial investment that's made in that property, we don't want this to somehow tarnish the property moving forward. So I just want to represent to the board that for all intents and purposes, we think the tenant is either packing or substantially out of there, but in the future, we will hopefully be back before you in the very near future and we think it'll probably be, at least on the interim basis, Mr. Piantodosi's corporation will be fine for the, for the license on this particular location.
Thank you for coming forward. So if the licensee has, is the licensee present? You don't see him here, Mr. Piantodosi, do you?
I'm sorry. He is not, he is not present.
He's not.
In fact, told me that he would not be present, so.
Okay. So I think at this point, I think if we're, we're just going to conclude the presentation of, of the evidence and does the board have any findings? We should make some findings of fact before we take a vote on this license.
So we pause the public hearing first.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Is there anyone else that, that wants to come forward with any factual information on these allegations? Seeing none, hearing none, we're going to close that portion of the public hearing and proceed to findings of fact. So does the board have any findings that they want to make?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I personally, like I said before, I'm troubled by the allegations. The fact that they're not even here, that speaks volumes.
So first finding of fact, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the licensee did not appear at this hearing.
Did not appear. Received three notices to appear. I think there's a finding of fraud. I think there's misrepresentation. I think there's deceit. And I don't think this is the type of business that should operate in our town.
Mr. Mosieri?
As you recall, at our last meeting, I spoke against terminating the license until we had a public hearing. I think we've given the A-1 owner and representatives an opportunity to come. Several notices, that's why I asked the question. Therefore, at this point, I think we have no other decision to make than terminate the
Now, I'll add to some of those findings of fact that North Reading Police Department received multiple consumer complaints that were investigated. Deceptive practices that Mr. Schultz mentioned included deceptive advertising, odometer fraud, forgery, financial fraud in terms of the financial transactions that occurred that, that, that were at least brought to the attention of the North Reading Police. North Reading Police investigators determined that lemon law, A-1 Auto was not providing lemon law information as required by law or at times was misrepresenting lemon law to consumers. In terms of, of the support for the decision that the board makes, I'd like to incorporate by reference the, the packet of documentation that was provided by the Detective Lieutenant and Chief of the North Reading Police to support the board's decision. That included information about five consumer complaints pending at the AG's office and three complaints, three consumer complaints received by the North Reading Police. There are safety issues involving this particular licensee with regard to the, the type of vehicles that they're selling to consumers. During administrative inspections that occurred, more than twenty vehicles were found for sale, although this is only a six-car license. And even as we sit here today, as we hear of this hearing and as the licensee is aware of the hearing, there, there are more than twenty advertised still for sale. The landlord appeared together with his counsel and represented that this licensee is in violation of the lease at the premises. The licensee could not and did not produce sales documentation at the request of the investigators who were doing an administrative inspection contrary to the law, even acting oddly and employees acting evasive and oddly during that administrative inspection, taking off and leaving the building. And it was subsequent, subsequently determined that the employee who was identified in the paperwork as the driver of the vehicles was unlicensed and had an outstanding warrant issued. So the other matter of deceptiveness includes basically false and incorrect information being presented to police investigators at the licensed establishment. And I also think there's one or two more findings of fact that we, we heard from the presentation, that at this point, there are actually no sales records that were presented, no accurate data, data, which is a requirement of the law as well, that this licensee is in violation of it. You don't have to add this, but I can certainly state that this is probably the poster child of what not to do for any Class II dealer here, but.
And.
Mr. Mosieri?
Just a question for the chief. Since I get a sense this investigation is ongoing, will termination of the license create a problem for you with respect to this investigation? Because I think the investigation didn't, was a criminal investigation.
It would not affect it at all.
It wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah, I just, the misrepresentation to the consumer, but also to our investigating officers, that's doubly troublesome to me. Oftentimes in these cases, there are mitigation, mitigatory factors. There's not one in this case that I can think of that would mitigate how I would vote on this issue, so.
Does the, does the, does the board have any more findings of fact that you want to, so concluding that portion, take a motion?
Ms. Chairman, I move to revoke the Class II license of A-1 Auto Sales located at 144 Main Street effective immediately on January twenty-two, two thousand and eighteen, and that the license shall, must be delivered to North Reading Police Office no later than noon time tomorrow. And the board makes the following findings in support of the revocation incorporating as well as what Madam Chair just said in her colloquy. Violation of license conditions limited to six vehicles well over twenty onsite and advertised for sale. Number two, deceptive practices, misrepresentation of vehicle condition and mileage. Number three, violation of Class II licensing statute such as keeping accurate record books on premises for inspection by authorities as Mass. General Law's Chapter 140, Section 62. Obstructing or hindering authorized inspection, Mass. General Law's Chapter forty, Section one, Section 67. Failure to provide current records misrepresenting that no titles were on premises. Number four, multiple consumer complaints filed with the Attorney General's office in two thousand and seventeen. Number five, failure to post the lemon law and warranty info on vehicles for sale.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two abstained.
Abstained, yeah.
Thank you for your help with this and your presentation. Can I turn it back over to you, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Wonderful job. Okay, the next thing on the agenda this evening is the water meter replacement project update. We'll turn that over to the town administrator.
We'll turn that over to the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, the Director of Public Works, Andrew Lafferty, is here along with the Water Superintendent Mark Clark and our consultants relative to the water meter project are also here this evening. There was a PowerPoint presentation that was put in the meeting packet on Thursday for the board to review and they have a similar presentation, I believe, to be run through here this evening. I think it's important to note that not only is this an update relative to a significant capital project that has been approved by the town, but that this is one that will have a very real and very direct impact on our residents in that we are talking about changing the meters that are located in their homes. So we're doing this to update the public as to the status of the project, but also to make the public aware that in the coming months, there is going to be direct interaction with virtually every property here in North Reading by virtue of this project. With that, I will turn it over to the Public Works Director, Mr. Lafferty.
Andrew Lafferty, DPW Director. Good evening. As the town administrator mentioned, we'll be giving an update on the North Reading water meter program. As you recall, the water meter replacement program highlights, currently we're looking at replacing all the water meters within the town. The project will address those. The existing meters are 27 years old. As you can see, the benefits that include this replacement, improved leak detection, better customer service, increased meter reading and billing efficiency and reducing estimated bills and billing errors. So the project has been put out to bid. As you're aware, the funding was appropriated over the last two fiscal years. Weston and Sampson is the construction and administrative services. Margaret McCarthy is the engineer that's been working with us. She'll be speaking also. Thai Sales is the supplier of the actual hardware and the fixed network system. Tom Garrett is also here. He'll be here to answer any questions from Thai Sales. And then Thel's Engineering and USI Services will be the contractor doing the installation of the field. They'll be the actual on-the-ground individuals that'll be going to all the businesses and residences to do the installation. And Greg Grovalley from USI is also here. So this is the current project costs as we get the project underway. Engineering services, the supply, which is essentially the meters and the hardware, the fixed network system, and then the installation is the actual installation of the meters in the residences and commercial buildings, commercial businesses. Currently, the project's at 1.7 million and we hope to stay under budget.
Yeah, you said currently, that it's currently, although we hope.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just a quick question, Andrew. How many homes are impacted by that? So we talked, you said the whole community.
It's all business community and homes.
All residences and all commercial buildings.
Okay, so roughly how many installed?
Forty-five hundred homes and 300 businesses.
How many businesses?
Three hundred.
Three hundred, okay. Thank you.
So I'll turn it over to Margaret McCarthy from Weston and Sampson to go through the project timeline and some of the details along with Mark Clark.
Good evening, Margaret McCarthy, team leader with Weston and Sampson. As Andrew mentioned, this project has been ongoing for a little while. You guys have been getting updates as it's been going along. We're now at the point where contracts have been signed with everybody, so we're moving forward. What's going on in January is we had kickoff meeting with the contractor. We're starting to finalize the locations of the collectors, which are going to be the towers that collect the meter reading information and then some billing system modifications that are needed in order to accept all of this new data that will be coming in. In February, we'll be installing the network that will be reading the meters and we will be doing some test installations to make sure that the billing system modifications and things like that are working properly before we go and start fully installing all 4,800 meters. Between March and October of 2018, that's when we will be looking at actually installing the water meters. Typical equipment, Mark brought over some of the equipment so that you can see what the meters and the boxes look like. We've also provided equipment pictures up here. The water meters are usually down in people's basements and in very few locations do you have them in meter pits outside the houses. So we are talking about a small impact to everybody as we look to replace that equipment that is over 27 years old. This is information on the Neptune Register. One of the reasons, as Andrew had mentioned, we are looking to replace these meters is to be able to provide customers with more information in terms of the water that they're using. The Neptune Register now allows for reading down to one-tenth of a gallon. You do not get that granularity with the technology that is currently installed in the system. This allows you to do things like leak detection, backflow flagging. So this, what's shown here on this slide is just a picture of how you read your new water meters, because it is a little bit different. The technology has changed. It's not a manual, it's more electronic now. And this would be provided to the homeowners at the end of the meter installation, which we're going to talk about the process in a future slide. The customer notification, which this is a part of, as people will be hopefully watching this meeting, we are going to be starting with a public outreach. This will include water bill insert in February. It will include newspaper notification of the meter replacement program. It will include website update as well. So any media type that we can reach out to the customers to let them know what to expect, that is what we're planning on targeting. As we start to move into the project, there will be direct mailings by Thelson USI asking them to get in contact with them to schedule the appointments. This is a sample of what the direct mailing would look like. It will be a postcard with the town seal on it, asking them, letting them know that USI will be in the area and that they please contact them to schedule an appointment, either through the telephone number or the website that is provided. It also provides a little bit of details of we need someone home over the age of 18 at the time of the installation. The installation should take no more than 45 minutes with a small interruption in the water service of about 15 minutes. This, all of this information will be provided in previous notifications, but also in this direct mailing as well. This is a screenshot of what the website looks like where customers will be directed to make their appointments. There is also a telephone number because not everybody will be wanting to use a website. They want to talk to somebody about the program. So the procedure, what do the customers need to know? They will receive a notice via mail asking them to make an appointment when USI is working in their area. We are doing this locationally so that the installer is not basically going all over the town. We are looking to start in areas and the areas will be. What was the area that we talked about potentially targeting as a person?
One of the areas we talked, we talked about going into some of the newer areas for the pilot testing, so maybe the McIntyre neighborhood, which has all new meters. We know all the valves to shut off will work in those houses. So if we want to get a quick number of meters in there just for testing purposes, going into one of the newer neighborhoods. But we will be going sequentially from neighborhood to neighborhood. We're not going to do a bulk mailing in order to get everyone that postcard at the same time.
So, and this is controlled too, in order to be able to provide the customers with an appointment that is a very short period out as opposed to having to have them schedule months out. So they'll call or go to the website to make an appointment. The installer, the installations will be between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, but with limited evening and weekend appointments available for those who need it. And they will also be accommodating special requests from the commercial customers who may need to accommodate their working hours. So that will all be accommodated by USI. USI will arrive for the installation. They will be, they will all have background checks prior to them even starting this project. That's part of this wholesome middle process that we're in the process of doing now. They'll be badged and they'll be in marked vehicles. In addition, we will be providing the police department with notifications of the areas that they'll be working in in case residents call to ask questions about the installer group in case there's questions with regards to that. And typical installation, as I mentioned previously, take about 45 minutes and then they'll receive the handouts on how to read the water meters, which is what I had shown on a previous slide, plus the Water Smart customer portal, which is one of the reasons that this program was selected was in order to be able to provide customers with more information on their water usage. This portal will allow customers who want to engage in things like being notified if their usage is higher than normal or if they might be, you know, based on their current usage, approaching a bill that's higher. But they get to set those notifications based on their own interest in monitoring. They'll be able to look at historical billing information. They'll be able to get alerts and notifications that they choose and in the method that they choose, whether it be an email, a voice, or a text. They'll also be provided with information on ways to save money if they wanted to reduce their water bill. And like I said, they'll be able to set the threshold notifications. So.
I have one. So when you do the transition, what's the impact on the water bill?
So they're mechanical meters. They slow down over time. A 27-year-old meter is not going to be registering the same volume of water that a new meter will. They do lose accuracy over the time period. I cannot say by what percentage. Do you want to add more to that, Mark, based on what, if you have any particular meter testing data?
No, I would just address it from the other standpoint. So if we replace your meter mid-billing cycle, on your next bill, you're going to see your old meter data, your replacement volume, so that will be factored in.
Okay.
Plus the, you know, whatever the incremental volume from the new meter is. So they'll, we'll capture all the water use up to the day of replacement and then we'll start again. So you're going to get kind of one combined bill once that.
And residents potentially could actually see an increase in their bill only because their meter now is capturing the actual water flow.
The bulk of our meters are in the 27-year age, so what happens is just corrosion and internal mechanisms tend to slow down a little bit. So they may actually see an increase in water use just based on that if they have a better filter.
Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, just a quick question. I understand the install will take 45 minutes, just so we can let the residents know, how much of a time window will they be given? Like will be here between what and what?
It will be given a two-hour time slot. And 45 minutes is a long end estimate. Under normal conditions, it should be within a half hour.
Mr. Mosieri?
Mark, I would, I suspect that some percentage of the meters that are out there, the install is going to be 45 minutes. There's going to be issues, whether it's a turn-off valve or plumbing or something that goes wrong. So how is that addressed?
So there will be, and Greg could probably address this better than I because he's more a field guy than I am, but obviously we go out and people have, we get calls on a weekly basis. There are plumbers in the house. He shut the valve before the meter off. Now he's gone to open it up and it's broken in the closed position. We're going to evaluate those on a case-by-case basis. Greg has a lot of experience looking at, if the valve has a red and a white handle on it, I'm not touching it. As you can imagine, some valves from the 90s are more likely to break than maybe something that was made in the 1950s that was made to just a better standard. So we're going to have to evaluate those.
I bring, I bring that up because that's exactly what happened to me when I was doing some work in the house and I shut the valve and it was a gate valve and it was in the middle of the winter and it wouldn't turn it back on. And the DPW did service, but where they thought the pipe was, was on one side of the driveway and it was really in the middle of the lawn on the other side and the shut-off was in the middle of the lawn. I mean, you know, that's the way the house was built. So it took quite a while to find it and shut it off so that I could replace the valve.
Yeah, I'd like to say that situation does not exist in North Reading, but it does. It exists in every town, everything. There will be, there will be ones that when they show up, they're going to say, I'm not touching that valve inside the house because it's going to break and the water department may not be available to come out and shut it off.
So then they coordinate that with the water department to make sure there's some emergency backup if something doesn't work.
Right. Our goal is, our goal is if we tell you the water's going to be, we're going to do it in 45 minutes and there's going to be a 15-minute window that the water's off, we're not looking to have you without water going into that evening. So there may be ones we say, look, we're just going to have to, they're going to have to coordinate with the water department and they come back and replace it. Just so people know, and we get this question a lot, we own the water meters that are in the home. We own, there's what we call a meter horn that the meter sets in. We do not own the piping before the meter. So we own to the shut-off valve outside by the street. Beyond that, the homeowner owns the service. They own that shut-off valve before the meter. So if that's a broken valve, that's the homeowner's responsibility. We don't want it, we don't want to be the people responsible who we've shut it and now it's broken in a closed position. So there may, will be those situations we have to deal with.
Just as a follow-up to that, so if there is a problem with the meter, no, excuse me, with the shut-off inside the house before the meter, like with my house, there is one there, I'm responsible for that? Will the homeowner be expected to have a plumber fix that before the meter is replaced?
I mean, there's really two ways to deal with it. One is the water department can come, shut you off at the shut-off out at the street. They can replace the meter. We can turn the water on back at the street. You've still got a problem with your valve. If you ever have a problem in your house, you're going to need to address that. The other option would be to just require the homeowner to do the plumbing upgrade before we come in and do the meter repair.
The other question I have is from a monitoring standpoint here at Town Hall, if someone's away in this water leak at someone's home, will that provide us the technology now to be aware of that whereas now we don't?
Yes.
So to speak to the, Margaret mentioned the granularity. We bill in units of thousands of gallons as the water department. Kind of the, the second meter to the right is what's in about 80% of the homes. It's the one with that black box. The black box is on the outside of the home. We can only read those to the closest thousand gallons from the outside. So if your home's using 200 gallons a day, for us, every fifth day, there would be a blip in your water usage if we were reading it every day. The newest meters, the one that's closest to us is what we're actually going to install, we can read that to the closest tenth of a gallon. So that's 10,000 times more resolution than we have with the older meters. The other thing we're going to be getting is we're going to be getting hourly reads on that meter. So whereas we're reading it every 91 days now, we go out and manually read those meters, we're getting 2,000-plus times more meter readings from your meter. So what this will actually allow us to do, and part of what Margaret mentioned, the Water Smart at the end, it'll actually allow you as a homeowner to say, alert me, there's technology in that meter head that says, divides the day up into 96 15-minute intervals. And if so many consecutive of those 15-minute intervals have actual positive water use in them, the meter will notify us and it can notify you through this Water Smart that we suspect based on that usage that there's water use in your home. So it'll look at it if it's 3.6 gallons and then it's 4.2 gallons and then it's 5.7 gallons. It'll keep track of that. And if there's so many consecutive 15-minute periods, it's saying, this isn't normal. And it'll give us a notification if you're away, but it'll also have you through your smartphone or through your tablet. You can actually get that same notification that there's water.
And I'd just add to that, that it does set it as to minor leaks versus major leaks. So you will get, be able to get a report that says major leak, which is the situation where you're trying to prevent property damage, where minor leak may just be that the flusher valve is stuck open. So just kind of compare.
I think I'd rather have you get notified than me get notified. Truly, because you know, I mean, I'm not into, you know, unless something's leaking, I'm not cognizant of it and haven't had a problem in 30 years, but doesn't mean I won't. But my question really was, you know, if there is an anomaly, you know, with my personal meter in my home, town will see something. There'll be some sort of an alert?
There is a system in there to flag that and notify both the town and if homeowners were questioned.
Right.
Now, if you're away, we need access to your home to figure out what's going on. Anything that's registered on that meter is obviously on the home side of the meter. If it's leaking on the street side, it's not going to show up on the meter because that water hasn't passed through the meter.
Mr. Messerri.
Mark, I think when we talked about this a while ago, is one of the benefits of going to, you know, communications direct from the meter, is that unlike now, in the wintertime, some of the meters don't get read in the quarterly cycle, and therefore it has impact, and we've gotten complaints from some customers regarding pushing them into the next level of the water bill. This will be eliminated, correct?
So again, we're going to be getting, hopefully, twenty-four readings every day from your home without leaving town.
Okay.
So we should be, if we, if we set it at quarterly billing and we say we want to do it every ninety-one and a quarter days, you know, we could literally get down to that, that limit of after, I'd say, when we read the meters. Generally, people pick, you know, July first, I want the meter reading, and they may allow a day before or a day after, so, but that's when we read all the meters in town. Now, the transition is going to be a little, little difficult as we do that. It takes us six weeks now to read the whole town, so we're going to have to work to get to that, what is the day we bill on, kind of, through that first couple of cycles.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Good. It's great that we got the background checks in there for the people that are going to our residents' homes. I'm sure they'll be some comfort to that, and so will the police department, they'll be aware as well.
But the key is cooperation for people.
We do need the public to support the effort.
And are we able to mandate people allowing us to do it? I mean, there'll be some people who will be resistant to.
It will be something that we probably have to come back to you to address, but yes, in your bylaws, it does say that you guys have the right to replace the equipment that you own.
That's probably a question to leave in council. Thank you very much. All right, next. Are those free samples, by the way?
You can talk.
Trash recycling collection contract.
Mr. Chairman, through you, this is a continuation of a discussion that we had at the second meeting in December. I know that there's been work done by the Department of Public Works to try to come up with a framework for a procurement package to review here this evening with the board so we get a better idea of some of the options that we might be able to get some pricing on. Excuse me. And we put a draft of the presentation in the meeting packet for this evening, but the Public Works Director will go through it here as well and facilitate the discussion. And I know that Mr. Mraz is also here on behalf of the Recycling Committee. Mr. Mraz, thank you again for being here this evening. I will turn it over to the Public Works Director.
Before you do that, is there, what's your goal with us tonight? Do you need a decision from us this evening?
So I think, again, I'll turn it over to the Public Works Director, but I think that the goal is to get some level of tolerance as to what changes we would be willing to consider, so that when we put the procurement package out there, we kind of have reasonable parameters with which to come back to you with a recommendation.
And you have a timeline when you want to get this done?
We do.
Do you need an answer tonight?
I think that we would like some initial guidance this evening, if possible, and if, if it turns out that we can't get there, then we can't get there, but I think to the extent that we can, it would be beneficial for us.
Just trying to look at, you know, it's quarter to ten, we have a few more things on the agenda that are pretty lengthy as well, so I don't want to rush anybody, but please do the best we can. If we, we can't come up to a clear direction, then we may have to have you come back.
Not a problem. It is, it is actually short. So as the town administrator had mentioned, this is really just to, to highlight the options for, for the proposal to create the RFP. It really doesn't tie, even, even if, even when we put this out, it really doesn't tie us to anything specifically because of the way we can manage or negotiate a solid waste and recycling collection contract. So the RFP configuration has six solid waste options, five recycling options, and then we separated out some of the ancillary stuff, for lack of a better word, the bulk waste, the televisions, the yard waste, and the municipal dumpsters. In addition to, it was added in a recycling fee, which we, not something we see currently in our contract due to the change in the recycling environment. Most, almost all vendors are trying, are putting a recycling fee out there. So that was also broken out. And this was kind of done in an option to maybe almost set up an à la carte type setup that gives us a lot of flexibility in, in identifying which way we want to go, and then further, further negotiation with a, with a potential vendor, hopefully come to a, a plan that works for the town in North Reading. So these are the solid waste collection options. This includes exactly what we have today, collection and transport to our, our contracted disposal site, which is Covanta. As you can see, option one is essentially what, what you have today. We have Tuesday-only collection, our two thirty-five gallon barrel collection, and this is strictly solid waste. We'll cover the recycling in a minute. And then we kind of took that option and just started changing that option and, and working it towards some of the, the options that are out there. The second option is a manual weekly collection of the same two thirty-five gallons, and then we moved into the automated options, utilizing the variety of different carts, a thirty, a two thirty-five cart, a one sixty-five cart, and a one ninety-six cart. And then, and then we, option E was an automated weekly collection and providing the variable option to, to households to choose a certain size cart based on their usage.
You have different rates? So the homeowner could be charged at a different rate?
Correct.
If I want a ninety-six, I'm charged differently than somebody to thirty-five.
Right, and so there will be, depending on how we go on all of these, there would have to be some discussion, or there would have to be a look at, at the, at the, at the fee and the rate structure, and how, how that shapes out.
No, but that's great, because I brought it before, we don't have any real options for our seniors, but this could potentially give us one.
Right. Couple of notes to, just on the solid waste side, and Ed, I mean, if, if there's something I'm missing here. Couple of things we need to, we need to determine, the funding portion for the carts, whether that's purchased through the vendor or purchased outright by the town. All the automated solid waste options would include some sort of pay-as-you-throw option for overflow, in order to address the overflow. The impact to the trash fee, as you, as the chairman had mentioned, we'd have to look at how the potential costs would impact the current fee and how that structure would work, particularly with the variable rate collections. Current cart costs, this is just off of OSD's, the state contract, this is current cart costs. This is just for one cart, so obviously, if we went for two thirty-five gallon carts, it would be, it would be twice that, that cost, and most likely, depending on what you do on the ninety-six gallon and sixty-five gallon, whether you go with one or two, those costs could increase also.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to come over microphone. You're, you're welcome to sit up here if you want.
I'm good here. The, I just wanted to point out, the DEP on the cart costs, there's money available. Not for the ninety-six, they're not going to give you any money. Thirty-five gallon carts, it ranges from ten to thirty dollars per cart, going from the sixty-four down to the thirty-five. So in Bedford, we were looking at a sixty-four gallon cart for recycling, they were offering us ten dollars a cart. We're similar, about forty-five hundred homes there, so it's about forty-five thousand dollars to the cost of acquiring the carts. So that's, that's one of the funding possibilities depending on what size cart is opted for.
Thank you.
So under, so under the recycling options, this would include, obviously, collection and then transport to the vendor's location of choice, whether it's their facility or a facility they separately contract with. The recycling processing fee will be separated out as its, as its own item to, to help streamline the, the proposal so we can compare apples to apples. First option under, under number three is manual option on Tuesday, which is essentially what we have today in North Reading, the eighteen-gallon bin that's, that's currently used, collected only on Tuesdays. The next option would be moving to a weekly collection, still manual collection with the same eighteen-gallon bin, or the customer-provided bins that, that people also use once they pick up stickers from, from DPW.
When you say weekly, that means it could be any day, there'll be different neighborhoods be assigned different days of the week?
Correct, it'll be Monday through Friday, or possibly a Monday-through-Thursdays schedule, and the town will be broken up accordingly. And that's, that's the same situation with any weekly collection. It's, it won't be one specific day, it'll be a four- or five-day collection week. Option three B and C and D all move to the automated type collection. That's every one, every other week, sorry. So every other week for option three B with the ninety-six gallon recycle cart, and then in every other week with a ninety-six gallon recycle cart with a, a potential overflow of thirty-five gallon carts for a portion of the households. For those individual, for those households that tend to have a larger recycling, that would be an option, option on those. And, and we can, you know, rework that, whether it's, you know, a larger bin, a larger number of households or, or something like that, but we, just looking at some of the other similar communities that, that's a thousand households that have been somewhat similar. Option three D is the automated weekly of a one ninety-six gallon cart. So kind of moving to, to some of the other ancillary things would be the bulk waste collection, moving that to possibly a one-week-a-month collection, and getting those scheduled separately, in addition to a similar collection process with TV and electronics, and then, which is not much different than, than kind of what's in place now. And then, collection of the solid waste, which is essentially the dumpsters from all the municipal buildings. And then the, the last item would be the item that would cover the yard waste collection. The initial intent would be to continue the, the same collections that we're using now, which I believe is two in the spring and two in the fall, and, and have that available to residents still.
Right.
Couple of the, the points to point out, as I kind of mentioned before, the, the trash collection and recycling collection is not covered under chapter thirty-nine, thirty-B. So there is some ability through the, through a, a RFP process, we can actually work with a, a vendor and negotiate, once we have a better handle on which way we're kind of going, and we can actually have some flexibility with, with the program and, and do some, some other things with the vendor, depending on how the town wants to go. The town and the vendor can consider more than one option over the life of the agreement, so whether it's, you know, we stay manual for, for the next year and then transition to an automated version, those options can, can be worked in also. That's essentially the roll-up of kind of how we're skinning this cat, for lack of a better word.
Mr. Messerri.
When you talk about the automatic, and you have the three sizes, right, does that sort of suggest that you can only have one barrel of any kind? In other words, you couldn't have two?
So depending on which option, and so there's a couple of different options there. There's, there's the option that does allow an additional, there's a ninety-six gallon option with a, with an additional thirty-five gallon for overflow. On the trash side, if we went with the one, if someone went with the one barrel, then it would be a, the overflow would be considered a pay-as-you-throw option. So each, each automated version under the trash colle, under the solid waste collection would allow for a, for a, you know, pay-as-you-throw overflow, overflow, sorry.
Well, I, I was referring specifically to trash.
Yep.
And there were three sizes, right? And my question was, could you have more than one? Could you pay for more than one? Will the, will the trash company pick up more than one? Or is it one pickup per household with a variable different size of the bins?
So as the way it's laid out right now, the only one that would have two trash barrels would be two thirty-five gallon carts. Anything over that, you would, you would have to pay for an overflow. If we went with the one sixty-five gallon cart, the overflow, you would pay for your overflow on that because it would only be one cart.
And the overflow is always the smaller of the containers, is that what you were?
The overflow would be a pay-as-you-throw bag.
Oh, bag, okay, I got, I got it, okay.
So today, we have, people can put two thirty-five gallons out there, which is seventy, seventy gallons, obviously. So the option potentially, you go to a sixty-five gallon, pretty much the same.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, no, what if you're putting out one thirty-five gallon trash and one thirty-five gallon recycle? How would sixty-five be?
No, no, we're just, we're just talking about trash, we're just talking about trash, not recycling. Today, for trash, you allow two thirty-five gallon barrels, trash only.
Correct.
So recycling, it's unlimited, you put out whatever, as much as you want. So under this scenario that's being proposed, you pick one of these for trash, you pick one of these for recycling. I personally like the single stream idea a lot, and I think I like having an, an option for the folks to decide what they want, all three sizes, but you only get one for trash, you only get one for recycling.
Right.
Maybe a little more work on our part, but you got to allow the public to have a choice.
So just to clarify, so yeah, there is only one on solid waste, there is an option under recycling for, if you look under three C, for those households that are high recycle users, to increase their collection with an additional thirty-five gallon overflow. So there, there's a potential for households to have a ninety-six and a thirty-five on recycling, on the recycling side.
Mr. Johnson?
I, I like in, in concept, the, each household can pick what size they want for the trash, but I got a feeling we're going to be paying a premium to have a three-tiered.
Absolutely.
Yeah, is it worth even, is there, do we have that, those numbers yet with the cost on that?
No. So that's kind of, we've, we've kind of got to get this out there to, to get those numbers in place, and at least that gives us the basis to work with a vendor to, to start negotiating. Because we're not held to a, a thirty-B-type bid, it allows us, you know, if there's two or three vendors that are interested in providing, you know, that type of sys, service, then we can sit down with them and turn around and say, hey, you know, this is what we'd like to do.
Well, the problem is, I, I personally like the, the homeowner can pick what size they want, but I want to see what the price that is versus the price of, if we all have the same, where I can make an educated decision what's best for town.
I mean, we could make it a little bit simpler, though. Today, we only get seventy gallons for trash, so we just rule out the ninety-six altogether, and that's going to be a savings right there. Right? So at least, at least it's even. We're not hurting any resident in town because they're getting, they're only losing a gallon, essentially, under that scenario. And then.
Five gallons.
Five gallons, sorry, five gallons, thank you, that's, it was a late night last night.
It'll be later tonight, too.
But, so we, we just eliminate that one, to try to pick away here, try to get down to something. So you do one sixty-five gallon for trash, and then you, in remote, by the way, have a, the electronic pickup. Cart, sorry, the cart, and then now we're really all going to do is focus on recycling. And would the board be objective to that? Yes, Mr. Messerri?
So Michael, let's assume that the amount of trash, the weight, the total weight, for the, for the purpose of this discussion doesn't change, and we go to the three-barrel system, right, which you seem to be in support of because?
No, no, true, I'm only, I'm only in support of.
No, no, but let me finish.
Sorry.
So that the elderly in town that may have a little bit of trash can pay less, at the same time, those that need more, right, need to pay more. But the bottom line is, the amount of weight that goes out has to be fully funded, so it has So it has some impact on what the rates are gonna be.
Yep.
And therefore, I think you need to get an understanding of what the rate numbers are for all of the systems proposed, before you nail it down. I know he's trying to, and I think you were proposing to.
But here's the problem.
Shortening the list, I understand.
But here's, they have to get bid numbers, okay? And if we give them three options, well, it's gonna be a higher price. If you just rule out the ninety-six, you're gonna reduce your cost right there, which we don't offer that today. So why would we want to increase what we're doing already?
Because someone's willing to pay for it, I just.
Well, that's, that's the problem, that's really not the way it's gonna work. We're all gonna end up paying for it, because that ninety-six is gonna get spread across the board. So eliminated, let's, what we wanted to, the goal should be is, let's not harm the residents as it is today. Today, they're getting six, they're getting seventy gallons. We're gonna make a slight reduction to sixty-five, and they're gonna have one barrel to do it. I think that's pretty fair, because, you know, things are going up. You, you add in, you bring in this sixty-five, and this ninety-six down, it's gonna make costs go up no matter what. I think we should just debate it right now and rule it out. I'd like to propose that we just rule it out. And then you just focus on the sixty-five and the thirty-five.
I just think we can't really, yeah, we're gonna, well, we have to see both options. Like, so we got the two options on one E.
Yep.
The, the two lower ones, which is fine, and you have one C. But I gotta feel we're gonna be paying a huge premium to be able to give the homeowner the opportunity to get the lower barrel. That's what I'd like to see those numbers.
Yes.
Just to this, we're talking about this, I'm gonna remind the board of that survey that was done a couple of years ago. It was ninety-two percent of the households put out two barrels or less a week for trash.
Yep.
It was, say, five percent, and all the numbers were three barrels, and the rest were four barrels or more. And it came to a total of a hundred and ninety-five homes. Just trying to get the scale of what we're talking here. So I think if you put, and whether you go to the thirty-five gallon, or you go to one sixty-four gallon, which might be given, some of the streets might be more prudent than having two barrels at the end of a driveway on some of these streets. You know, I think at sixty-four, you're gonna be serving over ninety percent of the households in the town.
Are we doing sixty-four or sixty-five, I see two different numbers.
No, 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 I'm just saying, if we do this, if, I'm just, you're talking about the size of the barrel.
Yes, I know, I'm trying to understand.
Sixty-four gallons, to what your point, is about what, the equivalent of what we're doing today.
Right.
And that satisfies over ninety-two percent of the homes.
Yep.
Right? And so, I'm just saying, I just wanna give the, the scale when you start talking, we're not talking, you, half the town's gonna, is gonna need extra.
I cut you off for a second, Mr. Bill Burdon. Did you wanna say something?
I just to clarify, I believe it's sixty-four gallons, not sixty-five gallons.
There's a typo, if, we have sixty-five, you have sixty-four. So that's.
Well, it's too late, we're going with the sixty-five.
So now it's six gallons.
That's fine.
Okay, that's fine. Listen, we're all gonna have to feel the pinch, there's, there's not much we can do here. But, to continue on this path, am I, is there any objection on the board's part to just rule out the ninety, is it ninety-five or ninety-six gallon?
It is ninety-six.
You have any objection to that? We gotta give some direction.
Yeah, no, not this time, I don't. You know, and, and again, I don't know what the, we, we have a, what the incremental cost is, difference is, but as far as, as far as, if we have a ninety-six gallon cart, the amount of trash that's gonna be disposed of is gonna be the same amount, correct?
Well, I don't, I, I think people expand to their existence, so you tend to get more people filling them.
Well, I think you, people have the same amount of trash, I think, instead of them stomping around like the Chilean grapes, wine makers. They're gonna just throw it in there softly. I mean, it's the same amount, same bag of trash.
That's not the way the RFP's gonna work. When they go to bid it, they're gonna bid with some assumption that you're gonna have a lot of those ninety-sixes, and we're gonna get charged for it.
Yeah, but we're gonna get paid on the weight.
But the thing is. But, but, but to your point, you know, I mean, some people stuff their barrels, and others just, you know, I have a couple of bags that I throw in there, so I don't have to stuff it anymore. But, I mean, we know, we know what, how much trash have been generating over the last few years. Has there been much deviation other than the recycling efforts, which have paid off a little bit? I mean, truly, we're generating about the same amount all the time.
So, so historically, if you look at the recycling and the trash disposal tonnages, the rates have decreased, they, they've kind of flattened out over the last couple of years. But there's been, it, it, it's been trending in the downward direction. Over the last, I think, three years, it's actually flattened out, and started to creep back up on the trash side. So, I mean, clearly the intention of, one of the, the larger intentions is incentivize recycling. And we would be, as has been indicated, we would be increasing the, the trash collection, we'd be increasing the trash disposal that we would, we would be allowed to collect by adding the ninety-six cart.
Mrs. Hellman.
Uh, yeah, one thing, if you have the automated sixty-five gallon cart, you also have the option to not avail a pay-as-you-throw bag, in case you need that extra gallon, five gallons, you're in.
Correct, correct.
And the other question I would have concerns the ninety-six gallons. And does that, are we at risk of taking away from our recycling?
Yes.
If you have a ninety-six gallon, is this out there, come on guys, sort of.
I'm with you, yep.
I think you have the risk with the sixty, sixty-four gallon one also. Quite frankly, you know, if you've got ninety percent of the households using two barrels or less, you know, I, I think you're gonna give them the two barrel equivalent.
What is the, if you have two thirty-five gallon automated carts, and we frequently just put out one barrel, sometimes two, more times than that one. There doesn't seem to be much incentive to just put out one of your two. And, and when you were talking about rates for seniors, and I mean, we're glad to see possible different charges based on container sizes. If you have two thirty-five gallon containers, you're functionally, you know, it's functionally what we have now. So you're really not accomplishing that, I'm not, I mean, uh.
No, but, but if we can now allow households to decide if they want a sixty-five gallon, one sixty-five, that's fine, then the seniors could pick one thirty-five. They're gonna get charged less than I am if I take a sixty-five, or sixty-four, sorry.
I don't see one thirty-five gallon there, but is that something we'd be adding there?
If, if you look at the one E option, that would be a variable cart. So that would allow households.
Okay, thanks.
And that's, that would, that's one of the goals I was trying to at least achieve, is to, to see if we could find a solution for the seniors.
To, to me, that, that it would be one automated weekly thirty-five gallon with the option of the thirty-five. It's like, for my household right now, I'd go, I'd put out one barrel a week. I only need one thirty-five gallon. And when I look up and down my street, a couple of my neighbors need to borrow my other one, I guess. But the rest of them, it's one barrel for the most part, with the recycling. So, you know, and I, I get, I don't see that option otherwise, but I mean, one with the option of the extra.
But the problem is you gotta buy them, and once you buy them, that's what you're getting billed.
But what, what, you know, the option of one barrel, and I think that, then and there, provides an opportunity for the low users, which includes the seniors, the opportunity to pay less than the people who opt into two. You know, or an optional one.
Mrs. Minier, help.
So why don't you just make one E, the automatic, the variable, just thirty-five and sixty-four, and take the ninety-six off?
Can't we run the numbers both ways on one E?
Right.
Maybe there's not much of a price difference.
But I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the, the, um, I'm talking about whether it be the automated or the manual. One thirty-five gallon, instead of the two.
That's why I'm saying, if you go with the, the two, which is the sixty-four and the thirty-five, you can make that determination your own. So if you feel like your household can live with the one thirty-five, then that's what you go to, and then you just buy the extra bags for, to have on standby if you go over. And then for me, where I have a lot more trash than you, I'll elect to get the sixty-four. And, and that's it, then I'm gonna get billed for sixty-four, you're gonna get billed for thirty-five. Today, you're getting billed, we're getting billed for both.
Right.
And you're not using.
We'll obtain the same price.
Why can't we run it over three ways?
Because nine, pretty much nobody uses ninety-six, why are we wasting our?
Yeah, so, so back to the chairman's original question, yeah, I don't have a problem with eliminating the ninety-six.
Yeah, I, I just.
By the way.
Why don't run the numbers, okay, we don't go with it.
Mike, I don't have.
Sorry.
I don't have a problem with eliminating ninety-six either.
Okay, but now you're going back.
But this, we're gonna help narrow it down, we're backing into it.
Yes, Mr. McGrath.
So, the size of the barrel, the issue with the ninety-six is how much trash you're generating. It's the cost, your, the cost of the ninety-six is gonna increase at Covanta. That's where the cost of them. The cost of the truck going around town, regardless if it's a ninety-six or a sixty-four, is pretty much gonna be the same. They might, you know, that, that's, you're mentioning, you know, get a figure for ninety-six. The cost is gonna be Covanta.
Yeah, but how do they bid it? Explain to us the bid process. So if I'm gonna put in, you're gonna submit an RFP, and I'm gonna give you a bid, they, they have to do something.
I wanna know, right now, what we're looking for tonight, do you wanna, do you wanna go multiple days, yes or no? Or stay one day a week? That's gonna, that is.
I don't know what the cost differential is.
Hold on, that, that's gonna affect the bid.
I'm sure.
As I said, I think I said it the last time I was here, that there are companies, the major companies, Waste Management, Casella, for two, local companies, will not bother to submit a proposal for a single day collection.
So what, what's the cost differential? And again, you know, people don't like change, okay? So they're used to the Tuesdays, and, and, and not opposed to changing it. But what really are we talking about from a cost differential standpoint, of allowing them to come four, five days a week? You know, it, you know, or require them to come to one day a week? You know, do I wanna pay a premium for the surety of, everybody knows when trash day is? You know?
I don't.
So, so, I mean, you know, but, but we need to know, but I'd like to know what that premium is. You know, because the, the cost differential may not be that significant. And if it is, yeah, then we go the other way.
Mrs. Minier, help.
Well, can't we just, I think that's what they're looking for us to say, with option one would be one day a week, the manual collection. Option two would be one day a week, the automatic collection. Option three would be one day a week, the automated. Option four would be whatever.
Multiple days.
You, you wanna put the, they're asking us to direct them to put the bid out that way with the various options. But I think we need to tell them, can we live with either more or see, we need to know what the prices are, be able to make an answer for that. And that's what they're asking us, to give them the, give them the ability to put it out as different options.
Right, so, so the, through your chairman, the, um, the intent is to kind of get some additional guidance. We can actually keep all these options and put them all out, and, and get the numbers and see where they, where they shake out. There's not a whole lot of harm in that, other than maybe some vendors being somewhat frustrated with us. But, I mean, ideally, we'd like to pare it down to, to what, what makes sense initially. If something's really not, not gonna be considered, then it'd be ideally, it'd be nice to get it off the table.
Let me, if I could ask you a question, though, on that, before I lose track of it. So you said something, Mr. McGrath, that I gotta make sure you, if you could just verify this again. You're saying today, if we put out the bid of one day a week, there's less contractors willing, today, to do that, right?
I'm just speaking from my experience in Bedford two years ago. A gentleman from Waste Management came to us and said, if you stay in a single day, we quote, we will not waste our time writing a proposal or your time reading it. And another company, Casella, we approached them, and I know some of these people personally, and I gave them all the stuff, and we got radio silence coming back, never got, never got anything.
So, to me, I hear that, and I do love the privilege of having a single day, but I don't think the economics of doing that is going to be viable for us. Just 'cause you're not gonna have enough competition.
Every household will have a single day, which is not gonna necessarily.
It's gonna be variable.
It's gonna be the same day every week, though.
I don't know about that.
No, each household wants the same day every week.
So it's a, so kind of, yeah.
Monday, one day, one, you know, one neighborhood's gonna be, one part of town will be Monday, another part of town will be Tuesday.
So like every week, you're gonna have a same day.
So that's pretty good, that's better than I thought. Mrs. Minier, help.
I have two questions.
And then, Mr. Misery.
On the, I think it was on your previous slide, or the slide that talked about the extra bag, the pay-as-you-throw, right? So this pay-as-you-throw would only be for, I don't understand how it'd be for automated, this with automated cart, how are they gonna then retrieve a separate bag?
So, so if we go to, if the town goes on automated option, people are restricted to whatever they can stuff into that cart. You know, whether they jump up and down on it or, or not. Once they're finished jumping up and down on it, and they can't get anything else in it, and they still have additional trash, the only other option would be for them to, to, for, for the town to provide a pay-as-you-throw bag for additional waste.
But then who's collecting that?
Same company, there's additional cost, obviously.
They'll get out of the truck for that.
Hence the reason, pay as you throw.
And then, the second, my second question is, if you are putting it out there for the, all these alternative options, somebody could still respond to the ones that they wanna respond to and not respond to the manual, you know, one day a week, what, what have you. So that we'd still get a sense of what the board needs to know in terms of the price differential, if you put all these different options out there. And if manual isn't available, or no one comes back with a bid on manual, then that's fine, too. We have to move on to the next alternative automatically.
Correct, and, and, and we would expect that there would be only one, probably only one take on the manual.
Mr. Misery, you had a question?
The, the move to doing it over the course of a week is to reduce the number of vehicles dedicated to doing a not hurting trash pickup? Is that kind of where they're going with this?
Correct.
And that, from a business point of view, I could see where, you know, if they lose a, lose a particular customer, they may have trucks sitting in the garage, and people idle in a one-week thing. I mean, in a one-day thing, where in a week, you know, they can make that adjustment a lot easier.
Right.
And then if they have a truck problem, you know, they could have one spare for the entire environment and still get the job done, so.
Mr. Schultz.
Uh, just a couple of things, I don't think, I don't speak for myself, I don't, as long as people have a dedicated trash day, I would think you could have it, you know, five days a week or whatever, each part of town has a different trash day. I would think doing it that day, that way would also help with some of the delays we have, where trash doesn't get picked up on like cold days, snow days, what have you, because they got less of an area, and they got extra trucks probably available, does that make sense?
It would definitely allow flexibility when we, when we bump up against the issue with Covanta being over, you know, two-hour and three-hour waits. It also allows a lot more flexibility, as you indicate, if there is a snow day or a storm day. One, you're only talking a small area of town, you're not talking the entire town itself. So, so for them to flex and, and, and address an entire town because of one storm, as compared to one root, or one-fifth of the town, it'd be a, a lot easier for them to address that. And, and yeah, and I just wanna clarify, when, when we talk weekly, it is a set day all the time. It is not a variable day, rotating day, or anything like that. That would never ever, ever work.
You just guessed.
Quick question, are we paying a premium now for manual? I would think that automated would be less expensive than manual. Would that be a good assumption?
Uh, well, I think we're, we're paying a, probably a pretty good rate base, because we are still under a, a, a contract from five years ago. The, um, what we're seeing on initial quotes for the manual collection on the one-day only is, we would, it would be a premium. There's no doubt about it. And at, at this point, we can only, there's only one vendor that, that we know that's even, would provide that quote.
So I just wanna bring us back to the survey that you mentioned, because it was valuable data. And where you have ninety-two percent, I thought it said more, like ninety-five percent was two barrels or less. I think we really should focus our attention around that. You know, we can't, we can't come up with a solution that's gonna make everybody happy, there's just no way. We went through that painstaking conversation last time we went through this. And, so I would urge the board to try to narrow this down. Let's not send them out of here with this wide variety of an RFP. Let's give them some direction with a narrow view. And it seems like the support of the board right now seems to, the majority of the board supports the idea of having a multi-day pickup, where a section of town will have an identified date for that section, which I do like that. And, can we at least check that one off, that we would be in agreement on that?
Check that one off.
So that eliminates option one?
That's correct. One is gone.
Get rid of one B and D.
Okay?
So, just a, through your chairman, just wanted to clarify, it would be our desire to keep option one.
So, just, through Chairman, just wanted to clarify, it would be our desire to keep option one in there, at least, if nothing else, for a comparison purpose, to see, to see where that-
See, the only one we eliminated, and you wanna keep it in.
You know?
We're just trying to make this harder a little. I think, I'm just concerned about the bids you get.
Yeah.
You may get less bids, you may get less people interested. More bids means cheaper price. Less bids, it's not gonna work out in the best interest of the town. So I think you're taking a risk by doing it, but you're a lot smarter at this than I am. I mean, I only bought billion-dollar planes for a living years ago, now.
This is trash, though.
This is trash. Okay. All right, so if that's what you wanna do, but at least you got the, the board is at least in agreement that we like the idea of having the multi-day option to be considered in the RFP. Now it comes down to the barrels. And we're still on trash, we haven't got the recycling yet. Is there still a strong opinion the ninety-six gallon should be part of the equation? I know I'm against it.
You know, it would appear that if we had the ninety-six gallon in the equation, the bids are gonna reflect those being full.
That's right. It should be a negative.
Right.
Can't we get the bid with the ninety-six, one up to ninety-six, and look? I mean, I think there are people that are gonna be upset when they're losing six gallons of trash. I mean, why not at least see what the bids look like? If it's, if it's a huge price difference, we're not gonna do it, but we should at least explore it.
But to me, I think if we've got ninety, ninety-two percent of the households are two or less, those that need the ninety-six can buy the extra bag.
I'm not saying I'm for the ninety-six.
No, 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 no. What I said, buy the extra bag.
That's not how it works.
Or that could be the variable, I don't know.
That's not, if you're a bidder, a bidder's gonna look at this, and they're gonna make an assumption of how many people may acquire that ninety-six gallon cart. And that's gonna get spread across the cost. That's gonna be your problem. To satisfy what? Ten households, twelve households?
Yeah, but let's see what that cost is. You may be absolutely right, but why can't we bid it with thirty-five and sixty-four, and then give a second bid with all three? I mean, why not see the numbers? That's all I'm saying.
Because you haven't, maybe you haven't, have you built RFPs before? I mean, have you bid on RFPs before?
Not since breakfast, no.
No, seriously, I'm, I'm being honest with you.
I haven't, but we're giving them four options.
I'm telling you, somebody that's done multiple bids, this is not the way the thought philosophy is when you bid. You're making assumptions that are gonna have a negative effect on that thirty-five and that sixty-four gallon. I'm promising you that. Okay? But if you wanna, if you, the majority, I'm fully against what you wanna do right there. But if the majority of the board wants it, and I think you're gonna make the rest of the numbers look bad by doing that, taking that approach.
Might make it look better.
Won't the pricing to the resident differ depending upon which barrel they're picking?
It will, but they have to make an assumption.
So, people that are picking ninety-six, they're gonna subsidize, we charge more, so...
But they're gonna have to make an assumption, how many?
You wouldn't necessarily be subsidizing them with the people using thirty-five or sixty-four.
So the way it would work is if you're bidding on this, you're gonna, they're not gonna look at it and say, "Okay, one ninety-six barrel, one ninety-six gallon barrels X." They're gonna make an assumption, how many households in the town will get that? Yeah, they're just gonna, 'cause that's how they're gonna have to do it. They're not gonna base it on one household.
Are we gonna have a tipping fee, or are we true up to what we actually use? Or is that, is that, is that over in both?
Sorry, didn't hear that question.
Are we paying the trash collector for the amount of trash they're picking up? And then a tipping fee at the, that, where we're disposing of it?
You're paying a tipping fee at the disposal facility. You're paying the collector only to pick up the cart. If that had five gallons of material in it, or twenty gallons of material. But when they put their bid together, they're gonna assume a ninety-six gallon cart is gonna have ninety-six gallons of trash here or there, because that's how they have to, they have to account for their trips to Covanta for forty-four hundred households.
That's right.
And on our survey, the survey you did before, I mean, you said ninety percent were two or less. Do we have any idea how many were actually one? You know, was it sixty percent? I mean, was it like sixty percent of the households, or?
All right, how about this?
That would be-
What if we wrote the RFP, say, assume that ninety-two, or ninety-two percent of the town's gonna have a sixty-five gallon or less barrel, and that not eight percent's gonna have the ninety-six? I mean, they're gonna have to narrow their bid somehow, because if not, they're gonna expand it. They're gonna look at their- Yeah, they're gonna, right. I mean, it's the way they're gonna bid it. They're not, they're not in business to lose.
I think it's important if we can extract that information, as far as really how many households of that ninety percent were single barrels? You know, so if that comes, that comes back at sixty-five percent of our customer base, is a single barrel- Yeah, I think he said he did. You know, then, you know, then that's important data, because then we'll say, "Okay, you're gonna have sixty-five percent," or whatever the number is. And if it's high enough-
I mean, you can put that in the bid.
If it's high enough, then you, then you say, "Okay, we're gonna reduce it from what we did." Three barrels, we're gonna reduce it down to one barrel, from two to one, and people pay the extra. You know, and again, that way there, we have a more clearly defined usage, and we're not gonna be paying on an assumed higher rate of trash than we're really, a tonnage that we're not really delivering. Because we're supposed to deliver a certain amount of trash, too, right?
No, we don't have a guarantee.
You're missing something. The, you're paying, you're gonna go out and get a bid. And let's say you have a bid for the pickup, right? And it's a, yes, it's gonna be based on a bunch of things, including the trips and so on and so forth. But we set the rate, and let's say that we have two barrels, the smaller and, and the double size, right? And what we're gonna do is that's like, you know, essentially, taking the rate based on the total number of barrels of thirty-five, by saying if they're doubles, if they're buying doubles, then it's two times. And when you put it all together, and you say, "This is the cost of dumping X number of pounds of trash at a vendor, then you distribute it, so that people that have one barrel are gonna pay less, and people that have two barrels today will be paying more than they're currently paying, because right now, everybody has a two-barrel limit, and those only using one are paying, because they're paying for the others."
And no one's gonna have two barrels on it, like E. They're just gonna have different size barrels. You can have one barrel, it's a matter of what size it's gonna be.
No, no, I understand that, but the volume, right? So, you, you, if you have the smaller barrel, right, you're gonna, the people that get the small barrel are gonna expect to pay less.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, that's what we want.
So, right now, everybody pays as if they're filling two barrels.
Right.
But what I mentioned earlier was that if you take the total weight that we deposit in a year, and say it's not gonna change, right, and that cost is A or B, whatever, right? Then you take the barrel mixture-
Bob, that's not the way they're gonna bid it.
And divide it into the volume, and you end up with two-barrel people paying twice as much as single-barrel people.
Mr. Misery, they're not gonna bid it that way. It's not, it's not gonna be their thought philosophy.
Until it's, until it's quantified.
Sure is. That portion of it is, Michael. Then you get a ticket.
The experts are right there, you can ask them.
Well, I think they should have the town data what you just said before. They should have the survey data what you-
Mr. Misery, I mean, Mr. O'Leary.
Again, Andrew, Ed, you know, look at one E, all right? So one E is one barrel, pick your size, right? How are they gonna bid on that, other than based on historically what we deliver for trash? I mean, they're gonna say, "Okay, we got the same number of stops, we don't care if it's a ninety-six or a thirty-five, doesn't matter." Right? But the tonnage, the way they figure that, is gonna be based on, depends on what we buy here, that's gonna be a factor, how many. Or, they would then have to look at historically, what do we deliver in the way of tonnage? Wouldn't that give us-
Well, I think, to your, one thing I would say is, one of the issues is, if you're doing ninety-six, how quickly is the truck reaching capacity? And do they have to leave town, drive to Havel to unload, and get back?
But we know that it's not, because it's not that many.
Well, no. If you put ninety-six gallon carts out, you can fill up-
I don't think anybody's talking about doing that, but there are some households that may wanna buy into a ninety-six cart, you know, which would be less than ten percent of the people, based upon what people have been putting out, the surveys that you've done.
But is there a risk?
I think the issue from the hauler is, is how quickly is my truck gonna fill up? We just went through this two weeks ago, New Year's, the week of New Year's, with the cold and the snow. There was more, a volume of trash was up, they had to get up to Covanta, and they got hung up at-
Right, but that's an, that's an annual occurrence. The week after Christmas, there's more trash.
But, Mr. McGrath, when they bid it, will they take risk into account on that?
Yeah.
It's gonna affect all the other rates, for a thirty-five gallon and a sixty-five gallon.
So, maybe I'm missing something with that.
But if I can fill my truck up, if I only, if I'm only dealing with thirty-five and sixty-four gallon trucks, and I can do my route, once I get, come into town, do my route, and go, go to Covanta, and I'm done with North Reading for that day, it's different than having to drive to Covanta and then come back to North Reading.
That's the point I've been trying to make.
But this isn't less than the amount of trash that we have in the town.
Right.
That's my point, like what Mr. O'Leary just said. People are gonna have the same amount of trash, it's gonna take them the same amount of time to do one neighborhood as it does now. It's not like it's gonna be any less, because the size, you're still gonna have the one senior citizen with one bag or one barrel. You got other people with two, or, you know, like, right now, everything jammed in. It's still, this truck has still got the same amount of trash on each street.
Nobody's debating that. It's how they bid it is the issue. It's a strategy, that's what an RFP is for. It gives them the tool they need. They're gonna read it, and they're gonna bid to it. And if you wanna throw the ninety-six in there, you're going to affect the price of the overall bid. They've said it. That's what I've heard from-
But if we're gonna tell them, but if we're gonna limit the number of ninety-six barrels that are available, then that helps reduce the risk.
I, I don't know how you do that.
Well, I think, what did they have? You had one up there where you had a thousand households or something?
Right. So, there's, you could look at that option and consider something along the lines of making, you know, less than ten percent of the households have ninety-six barrels, similar, similar to the, um...
Right, right. That's what, that other way you had a thousand.
Yeah, similar to the way 3C is set up for the recycling.
Right.
There's an additional option to pick up an additional thousand households. And that could be actually separated out as a separate, a separate item, so it doesn't impact a specific item's cost, because clearly that will drive that cost up. If they know they have to pick up a second barrel at a thousand households, or whatever that number is.
Okay. All right. So you have enough down to build the RFP for that?
I wouldn't say so.
There's one more point.
Okay.
Every other week on recycling, or keep recycling weekly?
I like weekly.
I would say weekly.
What do you recommend?
I think, personally, weekly. I think it's convenience. Is it, I think if you show every other week, you run into the issue of, is this my week? You know, the word, say, is this my, you know, there was, you see these cities with the calendars and the green, your green week, your yellow week.
Well, we had that here, right? Didn't we have that here for a short time? And what about single stream? Do you-
People stop, recycle.
Is everybody on the board in agreement with the single stream?
Yeah, I think if you're gonna do, if you're, if you're gonna go every other week on that, I think you're just gonna get more of the trash, but-
Right. That's why I don't think anybody's in agreement with every other week.
Yeah.
But he's asking about single stream. I'm, I'm bad.
Single stream is just throw everything in the same bucket.
That's it. And it would be the same day as the trash pickup, the recycling, right? Even if we go multiple.
Yeah.
Okay? Yes?
So, eliminate on this three B and three C?
Correct.
That's coming out. And what are we eliminating on the next one? On the one before this, actually?
Nothing. You're getting it all, because Andy wants it in there.
It's like eliminating B and D.
Andy, you gotta cost every taxpayer a hundred bucks a month.
How big are our green things right now? What size are those? What's that?
You're eliminating one, one B and one C?
The older ones are twenty-two, the older ones are eighteen.
Those are eighteen. We're talking, one bid for a customer?
The current, the current recycling bin is an eighteen-gallon recycling bin. They're allowed to put as many bins as they desire. Or they can use a barrel with a sticker on it, at any size they want. There's no limit on recycling choices.
No limit on recycling.
So, Ed, you said you needed more, maybe?
So, well, one, one question I had was, are we still talking the ninety-six gallon cart on recycling?
No.
I'm not.
No.
But I think that, I don't know.
You said recycling?
On recycling, yes.
Oh, recycling, yeah, recycling, yes.
Recycling, yes, all right. But on the trash, I, I'm a no, but I think the majority wants to see it in it.
Why are we, why are we doing ninety-six gallon on a recycling?
For recycling, you're gonna want the larger cart, because cardboard, cardboard, you're gonna have to put stuff into that cart, in the cardboard boxes to fit in. You're gonna need the space.
Yeah, so today, Steve, you can take cardboard and just kinda lean it up against your, your, uh-
Yeah, I fold it up, though.
But now, you're gonna have to cut out everything.
Right now, I cut it up, and, right now, I cut it up to put in the green bins.
How big are the green bins now?
Eighteen.
You go by my house today, you got boxes stacked up next to it with recycling on, and they pick it up. But I won't be able to do that anymore. I'm gonna cut that thing up and get it into that one barrel.
Interesting, that alarm, putting out the cardboard boxes.
There'll be some a lot of utility.
It's all cardboard.
That's the difference.
If you, if you look at a lot of the residences, at least from what we see on our windshield surveys, the majority of residents are using something in addition to the regular eighteen-gallon bin. They're either using a second one, or they're using an additional trash barrel, a recycled barrel, sorry.
Or they're actually using a box, filling that box with all the recycling, right, which you won't be able to do anymore. Mrs., I'm sorry, Mrs. Hilber, I'm sorry, I passed it over you like seven times.
No, no, it's fine. Does anybody give any consideration to, would we like to all the ninety-six gallon cart? From your garage through the ice and snow full of trash to the sidewalk? Just saying.
No, I agree. I, I, I just wanna rule it out.
I'm finding that a driveway that's really short, and is in good shape right next to a garage, but it's not so great otherwise. It is less of a problem with recycling, is recycling is typically doesn't weigh as much.
Well, that's-
But I, but I do have a question. I only see a ninety-six, or a ninety-six and a thirty-five gallon overflow recycling, so there's no sixty-four, sixty-five gallon recycling available?
There could be. That's initially what we've laid in there.
If you do weekly, I'm wondering if that would be sufficient? That's almost four times what we currently do with the eighteen-gallon.
Ninety-six is equal to twelve containers.
That's a lot.
Well, you get the, the green ones, so we have eighteen.
I, I just say the ninety-six, because if you have all three items, the boxes, that would be a challenge.
Can I put two up?
That's a tough one. Okay. We're good?
We're good at what?
I don't know. Are we all set? Do the best you can with it, because I'm telling you, I think I've lost everybody on this one.
No, I think this was good.
We're good?
This was awful.
All right. You got this.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody wanna go get breakfast and come back? All right. Can we... Do the next one is the Director Public Safety presentation. I just have to use the men's room while you chew up your presentation. If, yeah, I'm not back yet, please continue, and Mrs. Minipelli.
What did we just direct them to do? What did we direct them to look at?
Mr. Gilbert, do you wanna proceed?
Sure.
Gonna get fined now. It's like the speeding sign, you're gonna get fined for trash. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll proceed with the presentation, relative to public safety administration. So, just a slide that we put on here relative to the discussion, why, about the discussion was relevant now. Looking ahead, we foresee growth in our public safety needs. Some of it associated with substance abuse, some of it associated with population growth and the demographic change that we've discussed, particularly with our older services director, and also the impact of our projected and desired commercial growth. Also, we've seen transition in multiple fire department positions, or will see transition in multiple fire department positions, transition in inspectional services departments, and increasing expectations placed upon our emergency management programs. Further, the sustainability of our fire department staffing approach. Right now, as the community's aware, we rely heavily on a callback system to provide for our first, or our response. And that's something that we're continuing to evaluate as the property gets, becomes busier and busier. Civilian dispatch, the potential to consolidate dispatch as civilian operated, freeing up existing police and fire personnel to address growth-related needs. Additionally, we've had some feedback relative to the town administrator evaluating, delegating responsibilities. From my personal perspective, that's something that I told the board members at each of my evaluations. From my personal perspective, that's something that I told the board members at each of my evaluations. And the reason the timing of this is important is because the budget recommendation process is underway now, between the Finance Director and I, and the involved departments, and certainly the more guidance we have earlier on in the process, the better. So, a little bit about the town's charter, which creates our divisions. The administrative functions of the town government are divided into an organizational framework that consists of four divisions: Division of Finance, Division of Public Works, Division of Public Safety, and Division of Public Service. And under the charter, Section 401.2, the selectmen may designate the divisions to be headed by a director, or by the town administrator, or by a board comprised of members serving without compensation. And if a director position is appointed, is created, that appointment is made by the town administrator, as is the case if it's a volunteer board as well. So, just a little bit of language about the area that we're talking about here this evening, public safety. The administrative responsibility for the protection of persons, property, and property, including the functions of police, fire, emergency management, public health, sealing of weights and measures, health and safety inspection, and other such public safety services, are vested in the Director or Supervising Board of the Division of Public Safety. So, this is just a slide that I pulled, it's actually up on the town website, that shows the divisions of the town government per the charter. And you can see that there are five elected, four elected boards, I should say, and the town moderator. Just up at the top here, School Committee, Planning Commission, Selectment, Housing Authority, and the moderator appoints the Finance Committee. And showing through here, you can see the town, the delegation down from the Selectment to the Town Administrator, and the division of the existing departments into the various divisions. So, this is kind of how things are outlined, if you take the strict interpretation of the charter. This is the delegation that's effectively, that is in effect today. And I'll just note that the division of departments is only classified and headed by a division head in two categories: Public Works and Finance. Public Works Director, having been up the podium before, the Finance Director here this evening. You see that there's multiple divisions or departments within each division here. The rest are individual department heads that are within divisions, but are reporting directly to the town administrator. So, just a breakdown here of the current table of organization for the Division of Public Safety as it exists today, headed by the Town Administrator, with the direct report by the Police Chief, Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director, Building Inspector, and Health Director. This is a notation that I put in here relative to the existing staffing in the public safety departments per the charter. I'm not gonna go through it, but you see that there's certainly a significant amount of staffing in the fire and police departments, and as you go through the remainder, they're much smaller in the staffing levels. Twenty-two uniformed individuals in the fire department, plus the administrative assistant. The thirty-two in the police department, plus the administrative assistant, and the one part-time director for emergency management, with the staffing in the inspectional services departments on the right-hand side. So, just identifying what a potential table of organization for those departments would look like if a Director of Public Safety position were created. You see here the Town Administrator overseeing Public Safety Director, who would oversee these same divisions: Police, Fire, Emergency Management, Building and Health. Just a note about dispatch as it exists today. It's currently a split model that's overseen by the Police Chief and the Fire Chief, a uniformed police official answering the nine-one calls, generally the supervisor, and a uniformed firefighter conducting triage or EMD, and dispatching apparatus to the fire department. And there's a potential, by looking at Public Safety Director, with the potential to transition to a standalone Public Safety Director, excuse me, that's a duplication that's incorrect, with a standalone civilian dispatch, if we were to create a Public Safety Director position, staffed by civilian, non-sworn personnel that could handle nine-one-one, dispatch and EMD. By doing so, we'd basically be able to, be able to take an existing police official position, make it available to go out and serve on the road in the community, and similarly make a fire, a uniformed firefighter available to respond to calls. So, I just put some notation here relative to the goals of creating this position, a Public Safety Director, establishing consistency of policies among the public safety departments where practical, creating a unified overall public safety command structure pursuant to the charter, allowing for planning for long-range public safety service structure, providing additional administrative support for transitioning departments, supporting or improving emergency management structure, and a fresh-eyed perspective for opportunity for innovation led by a uniformed public safety official or non-uniformed public safety official to challenge or question the status quo. And I just put a slide on here relative to potential implementation options, which is, there's a range of them. Full-time standalone Director of Public Safety, which would be similar to the Public Works Department, Director of Public Works. Combined position, which we actually have an effect in the Finance Department, which is a combined Finance Director Town Account position. Potential for a part-time standalone position, or potential for even contracted services. Those are the range that could potentially be considered for implementation. That basically concludes the information that I want to provide to the board this evening to start the discussion. And I think the feeling is for myself, as well as from the Human Resources Director and the Finance Director, that this initial guidance from the board at this stage will help inform our, our work towards a budget preparation to be submitted to the board in January for consideration on March third.
Can we hit the lights turned up, just 'cause it's this late? I'll stop falling asleep. It's dark. Thank you. Any feedback? Anybody want to provide to the town administrator?
I just think as our population both ages, what they're over fifty-five, we have coming in, it grows. I think our needs change, and I think this is in our charter for a reason. I think it's something that should be utilized.
I just have a quick question. Have we, because it's in the charter, have we ever had a Director of Public Safety?
Not to my knowledge.
No.
I think it's a good idea, too, because of all the transition that we are seeing and have. And to see actually, to see how the Finance Director is overseeing all those different departments, it sort of makes sense to have that similar circumstance with Director of Public Safety. So, all of those would come under that, you know, under the Public Safety Director now. So, all those different divisions would come under, under the Public Safety Director. I just think it's a good idea at this point, where we've seen, in those specifics, where we have seen and where we're going to see such personnel shift in those, in, concentrated in those departments. I think just for continuity purposes and sort of moving forward, the way that we wanna try to move forward, and with everything else that's changing in the town, I also think it's a wi, it's a wise course. It's a wise, I think a wise, um... It's a good, a good choice to, to have that now.
Although, one thing that stands out for me, and something that we've talked about a lot since you've arrived here, Michael, is, you know, your plate's pretty full on a daily basis. And, you know, even in your own reviews, if you go back and review, see some of the comments that are made annually now in your review, there's one commonality, and that is just dispatching of some of your responsibilities, delegating some responsibilities to clear your plate, to be more of the CEO of the town. I think this structure will allow you to, if you take those five different areas, and now put it under someone else, and then they're reporting to you. Certainly gives you an opportunity now to more focus as a CEO of the town versus trying to be our Director of Public Safety. And I think there's a lot of efficiencies that can be created from that, so... I like the idea. I know your concept isn't about singling out any individual department. This isn't about any one of these departments not running efficiently. And the execution, I think our departments all are outstanding, A-plus. It's capturing the future and how we go forward and find efficiencies in better ways to do our jobs within the funds that we have available. So, I, I'm certainly bought in on the concept, and I, and I love the idea. Anyone else? Yes?
Just, I'd offer just a little bit of information as well, that I probably should have noted at the beginning. Maybe I did when I read from the slides. But again, this is something that would require action by the board to create such a position as required by the, by the charter. And to the points that have been made, it's not about any one particular area. We have talented individuals in each of the departments, and leading each of the departments that are involved. But it is, I think, something that could benefit all of us in terms of the long-range planning that, that we need to be doing. So, thank you.
Mr. Siri, Mr. Larry, anything you have to add?
I don't agree that there's a need at this particular time for Public Safety Director. I mean, what we're talking about here, I mean, primarily it's, you know, Police and Fire Department, which are the two largest areas that need to be managed. I mean, emergency management is a part-time person. Inspection services, you have a building inspector and an assistant building inspector, they're part-time individuals. Weights and Measures is a part-time, and you have a Health Director and an Administrative Assistant in the Health Department. So, really what we're talking about is oversight, primarily for Police and Fire Department. There, there's no doubt that there's been some change, and will be, continue to be some changes in personnel under the public safety area, particularly in the Fire Department at this point. The Chief wanted, just retired. We have a new provisional chief, and with that comes some other promotional opportunities. But again, I think, you know, what's precipitated, a couple of things that precipitated the discussion as to, you know, what the needs really are. You know, we're talking about, we've been talking about civilian dispatch for a while, and that's something that we should continue to discuss and investigate, but I don't think we need a Public Safety Director to oversee it necessarily. Part of our concerns and problems, really, if you look at the goals here, consistency of policies among public safety departments. I don't see why we can't, and if they're inconsistent now, and again, I don't know that they are or they're not, I don't think we need a new position to ensure that there's consistency there. Unified overall public safety command structure, I think there's very different responsibilities when it comes to Police and Fire Department. I mean, they have different roles that they play, they have different policies, procedures, and guidelines that they follow, and are somewhat unique to each of those functions that they provide. So, I don't know about the unifying the command structure. I don't, don't see the need. And again, as I look around to other communities, don't get me wrong, if we need to blaze a new trail, that's fine. But I don't see an awful lot of other communities like-sized, or with similar challenges, buying into the same program. Additional administrative support, to me, I think that's part of what we, we're trying to address here. And it's not just at the department level, but it's particularly here at the town administrator level, and in his office. And if we need some additional administrative support, if we want to be talking about an assistant town administrator to take off, to take some of the responsibilities, not away, but have them handled by somebody else, you know, that's a different type of position. Supporting and improving emergency management structure. I, I, I don't know, I guess I'm not clear as to what we need to, to address there. In a fresh-eyed perspective, I mean, I, I think what's driving this is, you know, the board has been very clear over the last couple of years in our instructions to the administration, and in our efforts in negotiating contracts to bring about some meaningful changes and reforms, and we've been very successful in doing so. We've also had some difficulty in effectuating some of the changes that we'd like to see. I don't think that the creation of a Public Safety Director necessarily facilitates that. I don't think the cost associated with doing that is worth it. I think we could still effectuate the same changes that we need, or would like to see with the current structure that we have. There's no doubt that it's gonna take an awful lot of effort and time on the part of the administrator to do so. But I, I just don't, I don't see the, I don't see the need at this particular time, based upon rationale, to do it. There's no doubt that the town administrator is a very busy guy, and he does an excellent job. And he needs some sort of assistance and relief to address all that's been put on his desk. But I don't see this proposal as the, the solution for that. In addition to that, you know, depending upon, as we look at the different potential implementation options, you know, full-time standalone Director of Public Safety, it's gonna cost you what? Hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars plus, probably, for the one position? Or combine the position with somebody else? If we combine the position with the, one of our existing chiefs, for instance, potentially, you know, we have an employee that's gonna be making excess of two-hundred thousand dollars a year. I don't think we can justify that to the, to the taxpayers. I don't think there's a position that's, that warrants that kind of a salary at this particular point in time. Part-time standalone position? I don't understand what a part-time, I mean, if the position is needed, it's not part-time. And we're certainly not gonna contract it out. So, again, I, I, I think we can bring about the necessary changes that we're talking about, or we can bring about some additional assistance, if that's what's needed, you know, by looking at other areas. And again, we've talked about it before, you know, should we be creating a, you know, assistant town, town administrator position, or provide additional support staff at various departments in order to lighten the workload off of some of our department heads and the town administrator? And to me, that's a more reasonable solution at this particular time. So, I am not in favor of directing our administration to expend an awful lot of time and effort and energy and resources to, to explore this option.
Mr. Siri?
So, at one time in my tenure, I was looking at this very seriously, when things were nowhere near as well as they are today. At the same time, I think that to go forward with this, if you ask me to, let me put it this way, if you asked me to vote, to do this tonight, I would say no. But I'm looking at this as move, move forward enough to at least get a complete picture of what we should do, what it's gonna cost. And I think, I can be fair enough to say, I wanna see what this whole thing is gonna cost, and how it projects going forward, and what issues it's gonna create as we go forward. Because of the, what I think, in order to fill the position, and looking at the salaries and the costs and everything, I think we have to look at that very carefully before we make any final decision. So, I'm suggesting that we, we stop this town administrator from, you know, moving forward a little bit, getting a little more focused on a, on a real plan and a real cost. At which point, then I'm willing to take a position yay and aye. But at this point, I don't think I'm willing to say, stop the process. But I'm in no position to say yay, if you wanted to say, let's do it right now, and this is how. Not without looking at the entire picture, and fully understanding the implications. That's where I am.
I mean, the town administrator's bringing this forward. Wasn't asked, by us to bring it forward, it was something he wanted to do. When you look at his responsibilities on a daily basis, it's pretty overwhelming where he's at. So, he wouldn't be putting this forward if he didn't need it. So, he would know better what he needs to get his job done, and I would hate to question him on that. And we certainly should have questions, but I don't think we should derail him from this opportunity if that's what he wants to take. We should help him try to find the best path... We should help him try to find the best path to do it, and I think if we give him the opportunity, at least give him a, you know, a hint tonight that, or a decision tonight that the majority of the board's going to be in favor of it, so he can go back and come back to us at our next meeting and tell us how he's going to pay for it. Give you some of the answers you're looking for, Mr. Messer. But I think it's important that we go back and you look at that overall organizational structure the way it is today, it's overwhelming. Everything runs through him right now. And some of this stuff is very important, especially civilian dispatch. We've been talking about it since I arrived here eight years ago. That's never going to get off the table because we keep talking about it. Until you have somebody championing it, it's not going to get done. So, I don't know if there was a, if you were looking for a motion tonight from us, or what is it you were looking for us tonight to do, and then what's the next step? And I have other, one question I need you to answer with that, too. So, there's three questions, and the third one is, is this thing forever? Is this something you want to keep in place forever? Is it an affirmative position that you wanted to, what's your thought on that?
So, I'll try to take them in order, I guess. I did put a motion in the package and put a note on the agenda, working with you, Mr. Chairman, relative to the vote that I thought was appropriate, which was to direct a town administrator to present an implementation plan for the position of Director of Public Safety. And the thinking was that if there was an affirmative vote by the board to do so, I would work with the Finance Director to create a budget recommendation that included and reflected that and submit it to the board. The timing as such is, it would probably bring us right close to our next meeting when we'll be looking to submit budgets, but, you know, that time is running right up about the time we'll be submitting the entirety of the budget as well. So, it may or may not be for that evening. In terms of the permanence to the position, I consider it to be no different than really everything else that we look at in the budget. The Finance Director and the department heads will tell you that we go through every department of budget submission every year and scrutinize the requests that are in there, and this would be no different. It was something that we would look at and evaluate on an ongoing basis and make a recommendation, no different than I have in other areas in the past, based on the need and based on where we stand. Did I answer any questions?
You did. That was great.
Mr. O'Leary.
I had a quick question, but I just think taking this opportunity now, I don't feel pressured to do so, but I think it's a good time and it's a good opportunity to do so. And I equate it similar to the recommendation of having an HR director. We had this lengthy discussion about the HR director. I think, I think, I think I would agree with the chairman that there is, I don't agree that you're overwhelmed, but I do, I do think there's an awful lot on your plate, and there's an awful lot that you do do that, you know, there's a lot more that you do that's more in the way of, for lack of a better word, triage versus effectuating your mission for the town. And I think we hear a lot of these issues, management personnel issues and things like that, and I'd like to free up some of your ability to move forward with your mission for the town, you know, obviously consistent with the board's mission. But I also think, I'd like to hear from you on, if this is something we voted on to, you know, have you further this evening, what is your recommendation with respect to which option you think would best suit what you see for this position? And if we did so, do you have an idea of funding or do we have, you know, do we have money to pay someone to do this?
So, I think that the answer will ultimately, through you, Mr. Chairman, I think that the answer will ultimately come as the Finance Director and I move to the budget process and identify available resources or projected available resources for next year's budget come the time to make the recommendations. So, that's kind of a framework that we're working within. I think that, you know, looking at the scenarios, I think it would be fantastic if we were able to identify standalone director position to serve in that capacity, but I think that it's going to be challenging financially for us to do so. So, the scenario I see that's more likely to succeed is the second one, which is a combined position, very similar to the Finance Director's position with responsibilities. What we need to look at in doing that is what is the implication relative to, you know, overall of doing so? That's something that the Finance Director and I have to look at with the department heads involved to recommend for implementation. You know, in terms of the costs, you know, I'm not prepared to go into detail on that right now, only because I think that there still are some things that we need to look at in terms of the implication for it.
Mr. O'Leary, you have a question?
Yeah. Your answer to his question, obviously, heads us into the second option, which is probably the most realistic option if you were going to implement something, which is to combine the position, as you stated. And to me, and again, I'm not on the financial planning team this year, as Mr. Messer and I were last year, but, you know, my guess is that this particular juncture, you know, level services budgets for both the School Department and Town Government are probably somewhere between 1.2 and 1.5 million dollars in a deficit situation as we sit here today. And as we talk about creating, or, well, not creating, but actually, creating a new position, you know, whether it be combined with another one with an additional stipend or not, you know, to me, my priorities may be elsewhere or are elsewhere. First of all, closing the gap and maintaining level services is extremely important, not only Town Government, General Government side, but in the School Department. And again, if we look at, you can't help but look at the potential positions which would be combined in order to do that, we're left with particularly, basically, one option. And with that option, and again, the salary level doesn't make sense for the town in our threading. Doesn't make sense. And as far as it, you know, being looked at on an annual basis as to, once you put it in, it's very difficult to have expectations that it's not going to remain there. I've been here a long time, and I can't think of too many positions that have actually been eliminated. And again, when we did the Finance Director position, Mr. Dow was here, you know, that was, again, for continuity, consistency, and really harnessing, putting all the financial functions under one director with an additional stipend for that one position. But at the time, you know, and again, even today, this is worth a weight in gold, you know, we didn't have to take a quantum leap in order to effectuate the change, and it became, you know, the efficiencies were there. Again, to me, I think the ultimate responsibility still lies with the town administrator in relation to overseeing Public Safety and all the other departments. That's the way the charter is written. It does provide this tool. Prior boards have never seriously entertained doing it because there have been other communities which tried this option and abandoned it, such as Linfield, used to have a Public Safety Director. Didn't work. You look at Reading, you look at Wilmington, you look at Andover, you look at all the surrounding communities. Show me, show me a community that has a Public Safety Director. They may have additional support and administrative staff for their mayor or for their town administrator or for their town manager or for their police chief or fire chief. They don't have Public Safety Directors because, again, the responsibilities for the primary departments are different. And I don't think we need to hide behind a badge in order to effectuate the changes that we think are needed. Again, it's going to be a long painful process maybe to get all the changes that we feel need to be implemented, but that's not going to change whether there's a Public Safety Director here or not. All it's going to do is allow for it to end up in that person's desk prior to it eventually ending up in the town administrator's desk anyway. The ultimate responsibility and decision-making process still lies with the town administrator. I just think priority-wise, dollars and cents-wise, salary-wise, I think we'd be making a mistake, and I'm not in favor of it. And again, I think from the Fire Department's standpoint, we're at a transitional stage. If we believe that there are some issues there, let's address it with the new administration that's going to be there. Police Department, I don't know that we have the issues. I don't think that our concerns and our issues have been clearly articulated to justify the position.
Anybody else? No, I'll take the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to direct the town administrator to present an implementation plan for the position of Director of Public Safety.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Abstaining. Okay. Record show, three, one, one. Appointment, Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of following names for appointment as associate member of the Board of Appeals for a term to expire on December 31, 2020. There's two openings. I would nominate Matthew D'Angelo and William Belavents.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the, didn't we have more applicants?
Yeah. Do you want me to read them all?
Yeah, they all have to be put into, they all have to be put into...
Matthew D'Angelo, Laura Matola, Clancy Maine, Stephen Leckty, Emmett Sobrami, Mark DeSimone, and William Belavents.
So, we have to do a roll call?
Yeah, I'm recommending Mr. D'Angelo and Mr. Belavents.
And do we have, is this recommendation based upon discussions with the Chair?
Yes, and I reached out to every one of the applicants, spoke to the ones who either I spoke with or returned my call, and did speak with the Chair at length as well.
And the recommendation of the Chair and other members of the Board of Appeals was...
The Chair did not know any of the other applicants. He had concerns on Mr. Belavents because of these other related committees. We did receive an opinion from the Town Council, said it was not a conflict. Mr. Belavents frankly was by far the most qualified of the seven applicants. Mr. D'Angelo, who I also recommended as a background engineering, I think would be a good fit for the ZBA as well. Yeah, and the Chair and I, the only applicant we really knew, well, we knew Mr. DeSimone and Mr. Belavents. We didn't know the other five applicants. But I did reach out to everybody. Any more questions?
Just comments. And as far as Mr. Belavents, terrific fellow. He's a wonderful guy, and he's a good public servant and putting in an awful lot of time as a member of the Community Planning Commission, as a liaison from the Planning Commission. He comes to the Secondary School Building Committee meetings, he goes to the Board of Appeals meetings, he's been to a whole bunch of other meetings and putting in an awful lot of time. My concern with Bill, and it's not, has anything to do with his qualifications, background, or anything else, is that he does sit on the Community Planning Commission. The Board of Appeals' role is to act as a pressure relief valve for determinations made by, whether it be the Building Inspector and in some instances, the Community Planning Commission, so that applicants, members of this community, if they feel as though they want to appeal a decision, get to appeal to the Board of Appeals. In Mr. Belavents' role as a member of the Community Planning Commission, it has been the CPC's practice of late to render an opinion and offer that opinion to the Board of Appeals prior to their hearings and determinations. My concern is, is that if he's going to sit in as an associate member or sit in as a member of the Board of Appeals, a voting member of the Board of Appeals in the absence of a full member, he will have already offered, potentially have already offered an opinion on an issue that's going to come before him, which does not necessarily provide a fair hearing for the applicant. I think it's not that he's going to make a good, bad, or indifferent decision. Again, from what I've seen so far, I admire Bill and I appreciate his public service, and I voted for him for the Planning Commission, and I would vote for him again if he wants to continue to serve there. But I think there's, well, there's no ethical conflict of interest from a legal standpoint. I think where the conflicts could arise is the fact that an appeal of the CPC in, actually, a lot of the matters, most matters that go before the Board of Appeals already has a recommendation from the Community Planning Commission, so that he would be predisposed of already rendering an opinion prior to any applicant getting a hearing. The most important part to understand is that any decision of the Board of Appeals has to be unanimous, and in his capacity as a member of the Planning Commission, he will have already come to a conclusion on many of the issues that are already coming before them. So, I think it, and again, I like his service on the CPC. I just can't in good conscience sit here and put him on the Board of Appeals where he may have to render a decision on something that they've already decided on and has already rendered an opinion. So, I think in fairness to the public and the applicants, you know, he probably shouldn't serve there unless he doesn't want to be on the CPC anymore. Again, prior to his being on the Planning Commission, again, I was liaison to the Board of Appeals for, I don't know, dozens of years up until this year. And the Chairman and I of the, had talked about approaching Mr. Belavents to be a member of the Board of Appeals, but then, once he got on the Planning Commission, we both believed that there was an inherent potential conflict of interest that wouldn't provide a fair, potentially a fair hearing for an applicant coming before the Board of Appeals, and it just didn't fit well. Again, Bill's a great public servant, terrific guy. I admire him. I appreciate his public service, but I can't, can't vote to put him on the Board of Appeals.
And we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion?
Just...
No? We'll do a roll, oh, yes, go ahead.
But isn't that the subject matter, the conflict issue that was the subject matter of the opinion Town Council gave, that there was no conflict?
There's no conflict of Mr. Belavents sitting on both boards necessarily, but I don't believe, and I get it, I have to defer to the town administrator as to actually what was asked of the council in relation to the conflict issue. I don't know the specific question that was asked of him.
Mr. Chairman, we asked a general question relative to the ability to legally serve in both offices. In the opinion we got back from Town Council was that there was no prohibition on serving in both offices.
And the feedback that Mr. Schultz received, or he could provide at least us tonight and before, he's gone through the list of all the members, and he felt that these are the, his recommendation of the two best qualified members. If you have a personal issue with Mr. Belavents, then you...
I don't have a personal issue with Mr. Belavents at all.
And that's okay.
I do. No, I do not. No. Bill Belavents is a wonderful public servant.
You have an issue with him being on this particular board, which is...
Because of his other position that he holds, right.
It's your opinion of that, and I, you know, I just...
Only knowing how the process works.
But that one, but the nice thing about this process is you don't have to vote for him. That's what's nice.
No, no, I know. No, that's fine. Right. No, but I'm not going to not vote for him without an explanation as to why, you know, as much as I would like to, I don't think it's wise.
I think you've given a very extensive explanation, and I think it's a valid one from your perspective. I get it. But, you know, we had this the last meeting, we pushed it off, we allowed more time, more vetting, the opportunity to speak with the Chairman of the zoning Board of Appeals. I mean, I think we've done all we can do here. There's been a recommendation by a liaison, there's a motion, there's a second. If there's no more discussion, I'd like to have the roll call vote, and we'll stop.
Well, a little more discussion just in relation to some of the other applicants. I mean, I think there's some very good applicants that we have here, particularly looking at Clancy Maine. Worked for the City of Boston City Council and sat in on Board of Appeals hearings and sat in on hundreds of them, and I don't know how that doesn't qualify him for consideration in having some expertise as to how the process works. You know, part of what the Board of Appeals needs to do is, you know, grant some relief where it can be granted or to uphold the decision of the Building Inspector or Planning Commission, but also hopefully keep us out of court. So, we have a lot of other well-qualified people. In addition to that, we're always looking for people to volunteer. We have one, two, three, four, five, six people who currently do not serve in any capacity on any volunteer board, committee, or commission here. Mr. Belavents, again, putting in an inordinate amount of time, which I'm extremely grateful for. We're always looking for good, qualified people to get involved, and here we are excluding some other good, well-qualified candidates.
Mr. Messer, did you want to make your comment?
I just wanted to say, I, Steve's comments regarding, even though it's not a legal conflict, I think it's important that we look at Mr. Belavents'... I think it's, it's important that we look at Mr. Belaventz's position on CPC, and CPC makes decisions related to basically the people coming before construction together, whatever, and then, and also setting policies, and then things that people looking for a permit disagree with, or people wanting to make changes, as said with the Building Inspector putting something up, they go to the Planning Commission, not the Planning Commission, the Board of Appeals. So, you know, I think there's a problem here, and it's got nothing to do with Mr. Belaventz. It's got to do with anyone that was on this CPC wanting to be also on the Board of Appeals. I know Mr. DiSimone, I don't know any of the other individuals, and I didn't know what was the issue when I tried to contact them. So when it comes to vote, I'm only going to vote for one, one individual, just letting you know.
Mrs. Minipelli.
So is it, is it possible inherent, and I did have those same considerations, not necessarily the same as Select Man O'Leary, because I think they're just, they're just totally distinct, and these are associate member positions, but is there the, I know that I seconded the nominations, but is there the opportunity to get a more specific opinion with respect to the overlapping, if any, duties? Was that the context of the opinion? Because you said you just had a general question, if there's a technical conflict.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, there's an opportunity to ask, if there are any particular scenario we wish to ask for, I mean, at any point in time, I think any one of us, including myself, have seen the situation where there may or may not be a conflict depending upon the individual businesses before us for whatever purpose. But, you know, I think, I certainly ask, but again, the question was more general, based upon the two roles, and whether there was a prohibition on serving in the two roles.
Right, right.
Mr. Schultz.
I vetted everybody on this list. I reached out to every single person. Mr. Belaventz is by far the most qualified candidate we have in this position. We have an opinion from town council. I understand, Mr. O'Leary, you're, you're concerned, and I understand your brother's concern is the same thing. However, I don't think, no matter what town council goes back with an opinion, your opinion's going to change on this, so I don't see why we just don't put it to a vote tonight. Take this comment, hand on the road.
I don't mean to be disrespectful to your, I, I appreciate that you're making the recommendations, and I, I'm just, you know.
But we've already, we've already done it, we got you.
I'm not, don't mean to be disrespectful again. I know him too, and everyone here knows.
Because I think, I understand Mr. O'Leary's objection, but I don't think your, it's correct or wrong, I don't think your opinion on whether you vote for him or not is going to change on one call, but he says next week, first what they said last. You have, because you even said, I understand there's no legal, ethical thing, but you feel there's a conflict from a different standpoint. Your opinion's not going to change on that, so I don't know what waiting a week is going to do there.
Other than fully informing the other members of the board. The other thing is, Mr. Chairman, that I'd like to, I'd like to point out, you know, as I said, I was liaison for a number of years with the, the Board of Appeals, and until this appointment came up, I didn't realize that there was a, an associate member's slot unfilled. I mean, otherwise, it would have been filled a long time ago. And this, this one particular slot has been vacant for, I can tell you now, for a number of years, and I think it was just due to the fact that, you know, as it comes up for renewal times, it just fell through the cracks. It wasn't, you know, administratively on, on our end here, fell through the cracks. Otherwise, you know, we would have interviewed, again, we had a bevy of candidates before also that were willing to serve. What we didn't realize, I didn't realize, as even as liaison, that there was a vacancy, and we would have filled it. So I don't think it's critical, and again, the Board of Appeals can function, you know, with, with one associate member being appointed this evening, and again, if the majority of the board is truly intent on putting Mr. Belaventz on there, and again, he's a terrific fellow, but I think in order to make a, a well-informed decision, I think a, a more specific question should be asked of council. And if council has a different opinion than me, it wouldn't be the first time, you know, and it wouldn't be the only time that, you know, lawyers disagree on things either. You know, so I, I have no problem with, with having a different opinion, and you're probably right, that my opinion in relation to voting for Mr. Belaventz isn't going to change, because I understand how the systems work here in town, in the Town of North Reading, on the bylaws, the zoning bylaws. Decisions of the CPC can be appealed to the Board of Appeals. The CPC renders an opinion to the Board of Appeals regularly on matters that go before them, and, you know, you're an attorney, if you want to have someone represented, you want to represent someone before the Board of Appeals, do you want someone sitting in on the hearing who's already made a judgment on your application without it being heard?
We all serve on multiple boards.
No, I, that's not the point, no, that's not, that's not the point.
Town council, we've asked town council-
People deserve a fair hearing on the matters before them, on, on a board that has to have a unanimous decision. It can't be three to two, I mean, you know, two to one. It's a three-member board.
It's getting late. I think everybody had an opportunity, a fair opportunity to vet and vent all your concerns, and, you know, I went through the list, I don't know anybody except for Mr. Belaventz, so for me, I have to rely on the liaison's recommendation, how I'm going to make my vote, only because I, I don't know the qualifications yet, I've read all this stuff, but I have to go based on what my liaison's saying, and that's what I'm going to do. And I've been on this board a long time, and I've seen us have guys like Mr. Belaventz before us, and many other, you know, Mr. Carucci is a perfect example. The guy serves on probably four boards, I mean, when did we ever stop?
But none of them are in conflict.
But the bottom line, Mr. O'Leary, I've given you an opportunity, please. And I, we know your frustration with this particular subject, and I apologize that you're frustrated for it, but we have to move on. The liaison made a recommendation, the board doesn't have to agree with him, and we have an opportunity, we're going to do a roll call vote. I'd like you to start it off. If you don't want to, I'll select someone else to get the, the voting started, but I'd like to move on if we can.
The other members do not wish to have a, a clarifying opinion?
Well, I, it's been clarified to me. I asked the question. When he brought it forward, and when I got the report back, in his capacity as an associate member, even though he's on the CPC, he has no conflict. That came back from council. They fully know what his job and roles and responsibility as an associate member on the ZBA, also being the primary board member of the CPC, they knew all about that, it was all fully disclosed, and the answer came back, no conflict. I don't know what more council could do. All they're going to do is just repeat exactly what, there, there's no other way. They, they asked a question, there's only one way to ask the question. Mr. Messeri.
Michael, generally, associate members cannot vote. This is an exception.
That's correct, that's why we got legal council's opinion.
Legal, I'm just asking the question. Legal council understood that, that he could be a voting member?
Yes.
On specific, you know, on an occasion where there was a-
It was an absence.
An absence.
I believe that the position of the associate Board of Appeals member is a statutory position, so I'm fairly confident that you understood what the role was.
Yeah, clearly.
So, again, I would like to just get the voting started. So, Mrs. Messeri, would you start us off?
Mr. D'Angelo, Mr. Belaventz.
Mr. Schultz.
Mr. D'Angelo, Mr. Belaventz.
Mr. Messeri. Mr. Messeri?
Yes, and Mr. DiSimone.
And you're just picking one?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. D'Angelo and Mr. Maine.
And the chair's going to vote, Mr. Belaventz and Mr. D'Angelo.
Let me make sure I got this right. Steve, you had Mr. D'Angelo, Mr. Maine?
Yes.
Bob, you had Mr. DiSimone?
Yes.
All right, and we had, okay, thank you.
All right. After Kenny Field.
Mr. Chairman, through you, there's three actions required by the board this evening. First is to vote to approve a payment requisition. This is a approval for the payment of a bill that's come in, and the bill has been certified by the architect to reflect work completed to date. The amount is one hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. We have a motion in the packet. Does not make any change to the contractual amount to the project. There are, however, two change orders that will follow it.
So how do you want, you want to go through everything first, or just take one and assign?
Vote on the requisition first, please, because it's not related to the, the second and third item.
So-
Requisition change order?
Well, if, if we could just put, like, Mr. O'Leary on the one forty-six, six ninety-nine, everything's on track, no issue.
Yep, and, and the Athletic Facilities Subcommittee recommends.
Thank you. So go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment requisition number four in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars to Construction Dynamics, Inc.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve change order number two in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the purpose of connecting existing onsite electrical utilities to the new building.
Excuse me, what was that number again?
Four, four, two, seven point five oh.
It's not in the scan packet, it's only in front of-
Because this one says seven thousand, five hundred and five. Is that the second one?
After today's middle meeting.
Okay.
There were, there were two, there were two, after today, there's a second change order, which is the first motion that was just made.
Okay, because this one says for change order number two. You said that's for change order number two?
Two, yep.
And this says change order number two?
But the amount is-
Mr. Gilburro.
The first one was change, requisition number four.
Nope.
This motion is for change order number two.
What's the next motion?
Change order number three, door locks.
Okay, so that's my-
We flip them around?
Yeah, but when I, I'm not using their numbers, because we don't, a change order that didn't occur is not a change order. They use number one as-
I'm just going to disregard my packet? Is that probably the best thing?
I think that's the best approach, yes, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to shut that.
Do we get it again for clarity?
Please, go right ahead.
He's got the updated-
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve change order number two in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents for the purpose of connecting existing onsite electrical utilities to the new building.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, discussion.
Yes, Jim.
Just, I didn't quite hear what the change order was for.
Connecting existing onsite electrical utilities to the new building.
Mr. O'Leary's going to give us a quick little update.
I'll, I'll defer to the town administrator first, then I'll weigh in.
Okay.
I'll take the initial round?
Yeah, he'll be more calm about it, but.
Mr. Chairman, through you, this is a change order that is required to cover the cost both of disconnecting and reconnecting some of the existing electrical utilities in the vicinity of the concession and restroom stand, the former concession, proposed concession and restroom facility. These are utilities that provide electricity for the baseball scoreboard, the illuminated sign along Park Street, which has been dark, the spotlight for the American flag, and the electricity to the baseball field ticket booth. So there's a series of what I believe is all underground conduit that brings electrical service to the location of the former concession stand.
So they took that out, they took all of that out?
So they disconnected the connection at that, the electrical connection at your stand, and need to reconnect it in the new building once it is installed. And due to, due to an oversight in the drafting of the procurement documents, that disconnecting and reconnecting was not included in the scope of work, and therefore, when the project was bid on, that work was not quoted in the bid. So this change order addresses the additional cost, changes the contract to account for that additional cost, and ensures that the onsite utilities in and around that, the new building are reconnected properly to the new modular building, which happens to be due for delivery on or about March first, twenty eighteen. So.
Mr. O'Leary, anything else?
Yes, it was with great consternation and frustration that the committee had to meet again this afternoon in order to discuss this, because we've been looking for clarification for the last two months in relation to this specific issue. It was the Athletic Facilities Subcommittee's opinion, and I think valid opinion, you know, that when you disconnect one building, and you leave all the conduits and wires there, the expectation is that it gets plugged back in. There is no doubt in anybody's mind on the Subcommittee, and Marty Tilton, who was there firsthand, along with Wayne Hardaker and everybody else, with the contractor, the electric contractor, the general contractor, looking at the old electrical box and what was hitched up to it, as to what was there, what type of service was finally resolved, as to whether we needed more or not, there was no doubt that there were all these ancillary electrical conduits connected to the old stack shack. And the expectation was that we got the new one, it would be reconnected. The town administrator's kind way of putting it, you know, it was, it was overlooked, apparently, specifically overlooked, the specifics were overlooked in the bid documentation, and now we have been presented with this, this change order. There's no doubt we need to get it done, and we need to have it, we need to pay for it, and we're responsible for it. And there's no doubt that if it were included in the original documents, we wouldn't even be sitting here talking about it. I personally don't believe that the, that the cost associated with it would have been any more than what we're paying, would have been paying under the original contract. That being said, the Athletic Facilities Subcommittee recommends this, very frustrating.
Mr. Gilburro.
The good news. The strong position taken by the committee to reduce the cost of this change order from what initially was by one hundred dollars.
That's right, that's right. I mean, we, we went back to the architect and told her to have him sharpen his pencil, and the original cost estimate to us was eleven hundred dollars more. Due to the Athletic Facilities Subcommittee's insistence that there was a problem with this.
Mr. Messeri.
Funds are available?
Funds are still available. If you act favorably on this change order and the next one, we would have approximately, what, six thousand dollars left in contingency?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
All right, we have one more. Mr. Chairman-
By the way, just for the record, I voted no in the Subcommittee, but I voted yes tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve change order number three in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for the purpose of including a remotely controlled door lock system for the facility.
Have a motion, I have a second, any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is a proposal that we feel we can fit in under the contingency in order to bring about more efficient building and operations of the building. And this will allow, will allow for laptop remote access to the building, just like as we do with town hall here, we can lock and unlock the doors, and if there's a problem, we can unlock it, get in there quickly, remotely, as opposed to lock and key. And we think that it would be a fine addition to the facility as far as the operations, so that the recreation people wouldn't have to go down there, or the school department wouldn't have to go down there at any given time, because someone doesn't have a key, or someone, or some occurrence took place, they need immediate access, we can do it remotely. And-
That's great.
It fits within the contingency, and again, rather than coming back at a later date, if we weren't going to go for the full-blown thing here, we would probably be asking for a lesser amount in order to put in the locking mechanism and door frames that could take it, so that we could upgrade later on, but we think now is the appropriate time, the most cost-effective way to, to implement it.
Okay.
Mr. Messeri has a question.
Mr. Messeri, sorry, I didn't see you.
Question for you, Steve. So you said there was six thousand dollars after?
After this.
After this, in the contingency. Where are we with the percentage of completions such that surprises in the coming-
Well, we were also-
... money?
You're right. Obviously, the Athletic Facilities Subcommittee is very cognizant of where it is. We felt that the most exposure that we had was on the site work itself, that's complete. The modular building is a modular building, it comes in, it gets dropped in, we pay an extra to have everything hitched back up, as far as that goes. So it doesn't appear as though the, how would I put this, the exposure to risk is minimal. And we're aware that the contingency, you know, is low, but again, what needs to be done is basically, the electric's going to be taken care of, just tying in the sewage, you know, which is one line, and then the fencing and-
Landscaping.
And paving, landscaping, paints, you know.
It's all part of the bid?
All part of the bid.
So, that's pretty-
All part of the bid and all laid out.
If, in the event that something came up that was in excess of the six thousand, how would that be handled? Back to town meeting?
I guess it depends on what it is. I, I think what we, I don't anticipate that we will be coming back looking for additional funds. If, if there is a requirement for additional funds, my guess is the Athletic Facilities Subcommittee would go back to our architect and our general contractor and look for them to help us, because I think-
And any other questions? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January eighth, two thousand and eighteen regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the January eighth, two thousand and eighteen executive session minutes as written.
Didn't you already just do that?
That was regular, this is executive.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion?
A second. A motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor? Aye. Any other ones? That's it? Okay. Set up the upcoming meeting.
What date do I put on these? Today or the one in five minutes?
Sign it quick.
Michael, uh, the upcoming meeting schedule?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Through you, we put some information in the packet relative to the existing schedule, as well as a recommendation for meetings beyond the set existing schedule. Without reading everything I put in there, we already have meetings set for Monday, February 12th, and Monday, February 26th. We set the Saturday budget hearing for Saturday, March 3rd. And we had published a budget hearing schedule that included March 5th and March 19th, March 5th, March 19th, and April 2nd as budget hearing dates. And my recommendation to the board is to affirm that the board will meet on those dates, Monday, March 3rd, Monday, March, sorry, Saturday, March 3rd, which you've already done, Monday, March 5th, Monday, March 19th, and Monday, April 2nd. And then beyond that, due to the holiday, the third week of April, as well as where the budget process is likely to be at, at that stage of the schedule, the recommendation is that the next meeting be Monday, April 23rd, for a tentative budget hearing and capital presentation to occur. And then Monday, May 7th would be the last day to sign the June town meeting warrant. So in the.
Excuse me, you're talking seven, 7:00 PM or what time are you talking about the meeting times? Do we, for the 5th, the 19th?
So all of those have been, right now.
What are the March meetings?
Planning on a, planning on a 6:30 start time that we've been working on.
What are the March meetings?
The March meetings would be March 5th and March 19th, and that's in addition to the Saturday, March 3rd meeting we've already set.
And that's not changed from what's in the.
The budget schedule.
The budget schedule, yeah.
And then we set beyond that, we set a third or a fourth hearing date for April 2nd, which would be the first Monday in April. And the third Monday in April is a state holiday. It's also the school vacation week. So my recommendation is we bump the meeting to April 23rd, one week later.
That's April 2nd?
Correct.
And April 23rd?
Yes, sir.
So we'd go two weeks before we meet, uh, three, almost three weeks.
The 23rd's not on your list yet, right?
But we've had it in the past.
Yes, see, the second and I see.
Monday holiday, if necessary.
Wouldn't be a departmental budget hearing. It'd be a regular board meeting.
Maybe on the Tuesday or Thursday.
Any result, any resulting budget action.
Oh, okay.
The 16th's a holiday, is that?
It is, Patriot's Day.
Oh, okay. Wouldn't it make more sense to do the 9th and the 23rd?
You're back in April, Michael?
Yeah.
We certainly could. It would have put us in a scenario of having back-to-back meetings on the 2nd and 9th, but.
Um, why do we have to have a second?
It's a scheduled budget hearing date.
With the fin count, right?
Yes, that's correct, with the financial. So when we published the initial budget hearing schedule, that was the date we had.
Leave, leave it the way you have it, that's fine. Twenty, so it's the 2nd and the 23rd of April.
That's correct.
Okay. That's it?
The 23rd is a regular meeting, and what is our other regular meeting?
The 2nd of April.
Oh, so it's going to be a combination.
Combination budget hearing and regular meeting.
Yeah, we've done that.
Yeah, that's, that's the goal we tried to set, and we figured by dedicating three evening Monday, three evening hearings, we could spread.
Four February dates?
In the Saturday meeting, we are going to do the three budgets, correct?
That is the intention at this point, yes.
The 12th and the 26th. And we have the 5th and the 19th on March. The 5th and the 19th.
So a back-to-back, you know.
And then the 2nd and the 23rd of April. And then.
And the 3rd.
Don't forget the 3rd, right, exactly. That's a Saturday budget hearing.
Oh, yeah, the 3rd, yeah, we've always had that. Okay. We're good?
Thank you.
Want to give us a quick update, or are you good?
Uh, so I have three items to speak to, and I apologize I was not able to prepare a written report in time for the meeting packet. The first is an update relative to our snow and ice, note, snow and ice expenses for this current winter. Right now, we have expended, um, we've, we've expended $55,874 beyond the approved $175,000 snow and ice budget. So we are in deficit, and I have authorized deficit spending for purposes of snow and ice removal and salt sanding operations. So that $55,874 is something that we've accounted for in the so-called reserve in next year's budget, which amounts to $300,000. So we are approximately $55,000, $56,000 into that $300,000 at this point in time.
And my understanding was that, as a result of proposed state law changes by the governor, you approve, now we don't, the board doesn't vote on.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. But in the interest of full transparency, this is the first meeting we've had since we've identified the formal numbers, and so I thought that it should be in vague. Secondly, just an update on the board relative to some police staffing. We did have a resignation from the department back in November, and it was followed by the announcement of a long-term officer, Officer Jim McCormick's intention to retire from the police department, so we congratulate him on his service. That creates two vacancies in the department, and the chief has been working with the human resources director and his command staff, evaluating candidates from the assessment center that we conducted back in May of last year. We have identified candidates, so ask the board members to be aware that we'll be contacting you relative to potential swearing-in dates, I think in early February, for these two candidates. Again, just a further example of us working quickly within the structure that the police department, that the police chief recommended, and was negotiated with the union in negotiations two years ago. We're able to more effectively and efficiently proceed with the hiring process, and I want to thank the, his command staff for their efforts to work for it. And again, congratulate Officer McCormick on his retirement and his.
When did he retire? What was his date?
Uh, he has not retired, he's intentioned to retire.
Intentioned to retire, okay.
Yes. So. Looking to see, I don't have the date right there, but I don't believe it has come yet, so.
Anything else?
Um, yeah, my final comment is relative to the position of fire chief. Some folks in town were here this morning for the swearing-in of provisional fire chief Donald Stats here at the town hall. A little bit about the, um, the process for those in the community who may not be aware. The position of fire chief in North Reading is a civil service position. That means we're required to follow a state mandated process to examine or assess qualified candidates for permanent appointment. The town will be proceeding to secure the necessary approvals and agreements to conduct an assessment center, which we anticipate will be concluded between six and 12 months from now. In the interim, provisional chief Stats will be charged with leadership and oversight of the fire department. Mr. Stats was selected based on his combined education, experience, and leadership, as well as his insights to the operation of the department. I wish to thank the other candidates from within the department for this position. I had a difficult choice to make for multiple qualified candidates, and I was impressed with the qualifications and perspective of the candidates. Chief Stats joined the North Reading Fire Department as a firefighter EMT in 1998, was promoted to the office of captain in 2011, and was appointed and sworn in as a fire chief this morning here in town hall. Prior to his time with the town in North Reading, he served in a variety of public safety capacities, including corrections officer, police and fire dispatcher, and border patrol agent for the US Border Patrol. I congratulate Chief Stats, excuse me, on assuming the role. And I also would reiterate and congratulate Chief Warnock on his retirement. His last day working for the town was Sunday. And I know that some of the board members were able to attend a very nice send-off for him at the fire department on Friday, put together by the man of the fire department. And so again, congratulations to Chief Stats, and congratulations to Chief Warnock. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Mr. O'Leary.
Uh, again, just echo, good congratulations to Chief Warnock again on his retirement, and thank him for his lengthy service to the community and stewardship of the fire department. He's did a terrific job, and wish him a long, healthy and happy retirement. And to provisional chief Stats, I just wanted to offer congratulations, congratulations to his proud mother and father also. And it was great to be here this morning and watch his mother swear him in. That was an additional treat. And just offer my support in his, uh, his new endeavor and his new, new challenges ahead of him.
And I, I.
That's all.
My turn?
Yep.
I, I thank Bill Warnock on Friday for his services, and I commend him as a friend and individual that, you know, did a great job while he was here. And although he didn't get to the swearing-in because a customer called earlier this morning with a crisis, but he did get back in time to shake his hand and welcome him as our interim chief. And I look forward to, and we should all be, look forward to working with the interim chief as we go through the process, spelled out under civil service, full point, chief. That's all I do, Michael.
Yeah, just to, not to be a parrot here, but I had a chance to go to Chief Warnock's retirement party on Friday, and the, I want to thank the rank and file, and put in together a great reception for him. And I wish the chief well on his retirement, and wish our new provisional chief Stats nothing but the best.
Same. I guess same is what I want to say. Congratulations to Chief Warnock. I wish him lots of fun and happiness and whatever he decides to do next. He's a pretty young guy, and thank him for his years of dedicated service, and good luck to Chief Stats as well.
Same here. I'll echo all that, but I also want to point out to the town administrator and especially our HR director, you guys worked overtime over the weekend to really get this pulled off by this morning. So thank you for all of your extra efforts. I know you guys were even attending the MMA conference, which we'll hear about the next meeting. And, but I know you guys were pulling some OT over the weekend. We much appreciated getting it all done. So thank you for that, and I look forward to seeing Chief Stats flourish in his role. And with that, I'll take our motion to adjourn.
I'll give you a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Misery. All those in favor?
Aye.